So we are having technical difficulties with the Zoom room. But we are on Zoom and we will be live streaming and we're working to get connected to the video. You can.
So we are having technical difficulties with the Zoom room, but we.
Okay, that issue's fixed. Yep. Yep.
Do you want us to help you?
Just the computer and all those boards.
So just this court.
Let's let me just take this one out. No, I'm sorry. This one out because I don't want it to drag and drop every.
There we go. There you go. Just going to need those things. Would you just turn off the video? It just kind of.
Yeah, because your camera. You should be able to find the camera.
Not yet.
Because.
Does this chart need to be plugged in?
Okay, that's back.
The speaker.
Um, that's perfect. Thanks. Yes.
On the other side.
Okay. Um.
Okay.
Let me. Those on Zoom, I see a few on Zoom like Brianna. Brianna, if you can hear us and see us, can you please raise your hand? Okay, so we are functioning enough to start for now and then we'll work on getting this up.
All right. Call up the order and it's so fast. Yeah, thank you to everyone joining us in person and online. A holiday for the technical difficulties. We're still trying to work them out. Um, the first thing on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to ask Barbara Pucci, who we got today.
Please your head over your part. Repeat after me or go over here.
Wow, hello. Follow him.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, uh, next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Do we have any changes that need to be made? And with that, I will. Drew by Trustee Jackson, seconded by Trustee Martine, although who favorably I have opposed to Travis. The first resolution we're going to be discussing is approval of Resolution two, 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 three dash thirty six for recognition of the Centerfell City Rotary Club. Again.
Thank you. Uh, so I have the pleasure of presenting this resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, dot thirty-six. Um, mainly because my father, Bob Rafferty Sr., is such a, uh, you know, huge member of the Rotary Club and has really brought a lot of educational interest to the club over the, over the last year. I think when we think about the Rotary Club of Centerfell, you know, we, we talk so much about our community partners. And we don't hear a lot about the Rotary Club of Centerfell and, and all the things that they've done. But they've really been a partner of our district for a lot, over twenty years. And this resolution really speaks to some specific areas where, uh, the Rotary Club has, has supported our district. Uh, things like the mini grants program, over two hundred, three thousand dollars, uh, given to teachers to do, uh, you know, really interesting and amazing things in their classrooms. Uh, there are scholarships that are provided to Centerfell High School students every year. Um, five thousand dollar scholarships that go to, to those students. They've had provided dictionaries to third grade classrooms across the district. They have a Christmas gift program, uh, that really has brought joy to thirteen, hundred different families in our district. Um, and so when you really think about all of that support that they've provided our schools through their donation, it totals over six hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. And so just to have that supportive partner in our community, that group, uh, Centerfell Rotary that does so much for us and continues to find ways to do it. We wanted to recognize them with this resolution and that Superintendent Odom and I will be going to a future meeting on May twenty-second, presenting that with, uh, with this resolution, so.
Any comments from board members before I look at them?
Well, I, I, yeah, I know the Centerfell Rotary did very long spamming, you know, important for the whole community, but they've also been just phenomenal for the school district and public education. So I appreciate you, in the summary of all of your work on this, that we may go and thank them for it. And I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Jackson. Do I have a second?
I'll take another motion.
I'm going to invite Vice President Ward Haldau. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Bob, for just presenting this. And thank you, Bob, too.
Thanks so much.
Okay, the second resolution that we're considering is Resolution two, 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 three, dash thirty-seven, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Stephanie.
So we, uh, have the opportunity, there are many, but not many here, to bring to different resolutions, taking a chance to acknowledge the contribution, the history from a lot of the people we have here in our country. And May is a nine month, Asian American, seven year month. Um, and so I think it's really an opportunity for us to do a few things. One is to dig into the really vast history and really try to understand the Pan-Asian and Pan-Pacific value of your experience. But we think from that, as the Native Swamians, we've learned, taken from that, and who they are trying to reclaim and keep the culture going, um, to the impact of the time between that, getting the interment, um, it's really a big time in our history. Um, and we, uh, I don't think we can fail to acknowledge uptick we've seen in eight months. Um, as well as the really damaging model minority that, that continues to exist and create. And so how do we use this month and other months to acknowledge the history that, uh, so really that experience of Asian Americans and the seven days of how, um, as well as really think about and celebrate all that, um, those different cultures and races have brought to our communities. Um, and the ways in which we can go for and really learn to understand, uh, if I would kind of make one push to ours during this month is to really begin to understand the Pan-Asian experience, um, which spans over a range of languages. Um, and so really thinking about the impact that all of those different groups have had and the differences, um, as well as what. So, um, we look forward, we have like this, the books that we have pushed out to our schools, um, and we look forward to using this month.
Thank you, somebody, any comments on our office in the board?
Well, I just would like to say that, um, thank you, um, for putting this stuff in front of the board. And I just want to say that, um, I visited Angel Island a long ago. So, um, they, you want to see some of this history played out in a very well, um, presented way that I think also for students. I'm sure that some classrooms have been to Angel Island. There's a lot of, they've visited the bottle or, um, the way. It was actually a detention center, so they put like a gateway, but it's more, it was a detention center. So I, anybody who would, maybe that would like to have a little bit more understanding of the history in Rhode Island and where you are. That is a very tough. So I really appreciate that you're bringing this and also we, we can highlight all the, also contributions and the great things suffering, but also the contributions of this population. So with that, I would like to approve this resolution.
So if I have a question, I want to talk to her. Do I have a second?
No.
Seconded by Trustee Martine, although some favorites think they are. All those opposed, it passes. Thank you, Stephanie. And our third resolution today is, uh, Resolution two, 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 three, dash thirty-eight, no call to the room, to the.
Hello, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to talk about mental health awareness month. We noticed since COVID nineteen, um, there's been an uptick in social isolation and racial and economic inequities. It's leave this reflected in our attendance and student grades. Um, and also in the numbers of students who utilize our services through the wellness centers. And the students are needing services for a range of things that are coming up for them, from stress, anxiety and relationships that they're peers, all the way to depression and trauma and suicidal ideation. So we really appreciate all the work that mental health professionals are doing, or only in our schools, been in our whole community. And there are a number of events that are happening here in our schools this month, as well as in, um, MCOE is hosting at the community. So I did want to just give a couple flyers from high schools. And they're doing, one event is, um, called Wish Wellness Identity Self-Reflection and Scope. And this is a retreat focused on the wellbeing of our Black students and it's hosted by RTL Black Student Union and, um, ten unified Nevada and apprenticeship with MCOE. And then the Mental Health Awareness Wellness Wednesdays are happening at both of our, our high schools. So the events that, um, each one of those stays during lunch.
Thank you, Susan. Um, I, you know, I, I keep all of us on here. You know, even though the WHO is just scared that there are no longer any global pandemic, so the, um, that is not necessarily reflected in some of the isolation that people are still experiencing and a lot of trauma people couldn't run during this time and, and ongoing. So, uh, it's important to raise these issues and then proud of the work that our schools are doing and, um, because we need to provide services that are sort of needed. So would anybody else like to make a comment? Five of them were vital for the motion.
Not one. Those ones you can see.
Oh, okay. No, I think this is, thank you so much for bringing this forward. It's still a real conversation with all of us. And as people think that it's in high schools, it's in all of us. So thank you so much.
Yeah, and I, I thank you and I know the work that you do across the school, with, with the other, everybody in each school. I want to note on consent calendar, we're going to be approving an MIU with the Marine Health and Youth Partnership about co-sponsoring community discussions about parenting, substance abuse, misuse and mental health issues. And that's an amazing partnership that we're doing based on that, um, helpful to put those together. So as we aspire, I can't wait to press them on, but I'm going to read them first. So, but thanks so much.
Do I have a motion?
I move. A recognition of May as the full health awareness.
Thank you, Trustee Jackson, and I, Stephanie. Seconded by Trustee Martine, although some favorites think they are. All those opposed, it passes. Thank you, Susan. Our first presentation tonight is the Head Up Education Foundation report. Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations on the carnival.
Carnival.
And we are not able to get the screen up, so we're, we're keep trying, but. It is on the agenda.
Okay, so. You didn't have four of them.
We'll be active later.
I don't wish to ever change them.
Um, let me try to print it real fast.
Is there? Oh, yeah. There.
Oh, thank you so much. That is super helpful.
I printed it there. Yeah.
Sorry, I'm going to grab my glasses. It's not there. That's, it's just my eyes. All right.
Microphone.
Um, so thank you. Thank you for, um, having.
Here to present tonight. Um, this is, I just really wanted to give our annual update to the school board, what Heads Up has been up to this year and celebrate, uh, some of our achievements. Um, thank you all for attending. We just had our consistent achiever awards over at the Commons. It's Tara Linda. It's our first time using that space. I think it was a really, really nice space to do that event. Um, so I think we'll definitely do that again next year. Um, so just, just briefly, uh, one thing that Heads Up did this year for our own board is we put together the history of Heads Up because I think what happens in a lot, in a lot of our, um, organizations and boards that we're on is there's just, you just assume everybody knows because you're so entrenched in it and you forget as you have new people coming on, they don't necessarily know the history. Um, so I'm not going to go into too much detail, but I just wanted to do some highlights of, of Heads Up and how we were started. Um, last year Heads Up celebrated our fortieth anniversary. We were founded in nineteen eighty-two. Um, largely in response, um, like many other foundations to, uh, Proposition thirteen and starting to feel that the budget, um, effects of that. Um, but was, I, I believe sort of unique to Heads Up is that, um, we were really founded to administer the parcel tax at that time that was, that was dedicated to education. I just learned that myself, um, in putting together this history and found it to be really interesting. Um, then fast forward in the nineties, um, in response to budget cuts, we really started doing more, uh, widespread fundraising. Um, but at that time, our annual income was eight thousand dollars, um, that we were raising. Um, in two thousand, in the two thousands, we were rebranded as Heads Up and we hired our first, um, executive director at that time. And our income was up to forty thousand dollars. And we just at that time started supporting the middle school and high schools. Um, two thousand nine, we introduced Run for Reading and some of you may not remember Run for Reading is before your time, but it was one of our biggest fundraising events that we used to do at each of the elementary schools. Um, and that pushed us to the two hundred thousand dollar mark for income. Um, and then two thousand ten was our very first, uh, Summer Fest, which is now today known as Heads Up Carnival. And we, we hosted it at Andy's Market out in Locklomond. Um, and after a couple of years moved it to the campus of Centerfell High School, which was really the best thing that we did is bringing that event onto our own campuses. Um, in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, that's when Schools Rule was established. Um, and really that was a game changer for Heads Up. We received forty thousand dollars in our first distribution, first distribution from Schools Rule. Um, and, uh, in this time, um, Heads Up was funding fourth and fifth grade music. That's all we were funding in the elementary schools. Um, by two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we added second and third grade. And then in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we were, um, able to add, um, first grade. And so we were, at that point, really coming up to two thousand nineteen, we were fully funding music K through fifth grade in all of our schools. And it was, it was a big milestone for Heads Up. Um, unfortunately, COVID kind of came in and not only, not only hurt the Heads Up music program, but really impacted our music programs across the district in middle school and high school. And we're all, we're all still trying to, to rebuild from that and get students back into music. Uh, but we remain committed to not only music, but, but on all arts education for our students. Um, so moving, moving forward as we go in, we're finishing up two thousand twenty-three. Um, our budget was actually, we were back to pre, um, pre-pandemic programming levels. We just shifted our funding a little bit and, and we'll talk about, um, this year, um, the focus was, um, we took a new approach for elementary school and we partnered with Youth and Arts. Um, as, as you know, we did a presentation about that, um, I believe at the beginning of the school year, and this new partnership where, um, it's, it heads up Youth and Arts, our school PTOs and PTOs and, and the district all working together to fund this program TK through fifth grade. And sites get a choice if they want music, dance or art, and they get two, two per year, fifteen weeks of each. Uh, we've learned a lot this year from that program. We've taken a lot of feedback, um, really working in partnership with Youth and Arts. Um, with, also with Stephanie and helping us to get feedback from the sites. Um, and so I feel really well, but we're really well positioned for next year, um, to, to offer a second year of that program. Um, in the middle school, we continue to fund after-school enrichment, including the marching band, um, as well as some, uh, other programs that they have brought in community partners to support. There it is. Thank you. And, um, this year new at the, at the high schools, we were able to fund a college consultant, four days a week at both high schools. We used to have, uh, one consultant, two days at each high school. So this year really expanding the support in the, in the College and Career Center, um, as well as supporting some other, um, programs with funding towards the College and Career Center. And then also supporting our wellness centers with, um, funding for materials and supplies. Um, and then we continue, we continue to fund music, um, both at the high school and middle school. Um, with support for instruments at Davidson. It's really a very official jazz band and orgy band. Um, but remain committed to funding music. Um, so the, the big, um, the big thing that was new for us this year was how we did our mini grants program. We've always done mini grants for teachers. Uh, this year we partnered with Donors Choose and we were able to fund, um, twenty-five thousand dollars towards teacher projects. Um, this included fifty-seven projects for fifty-four teachers at ten schools. Um, but what was really exciting about Donors Choose is that, um, the total funding actually was closer to thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, because we were, we were able to get donations from outside of our community, including corporate matches. And so there was an additional, um, twelve thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars that came in from donors, mostly outside of our community. Um, and that was our first year with Donors Choose. We are going to do that again next year. And we have figured out kind of timing of when those matches are usually available. So we, we expect to be able to further capitalize on that and really support, um, these projects that our, our teachers are asking for directly. And, um, this site, um, shows every project that was funded. It's fun to go there and see, see the projects that came to life. Um, just quickly, our, our budget this year and what it looked like, um, between the elementary, middle and high school. The elementary school, uh, we use our equity funding model. This is year two of the equity funding model. Um, that we were, we were really proud to be able to roll that out. Year before last, we worked on it, um, for, for a few years before we, um, were able to move forward and, um, and I, I think that it's really part of what's allowed us to support this enrichment program that we now have. Um, then middle school and high school, everything is on a, uh, per student basis in terms of the allocation of funding. Um, the, the wellness and discretionary funding, so we have a, we have a donor that's doing a directed, um, donation to support the wellness center at Centerfell High School. And so that's why that number is, is separated out. Um, but we're on year two of a three-year commitment from that donor to support Centerfell High School. Um, and then the high schools get some discretionary funding, um, for, for other things that kind of come up. And then mini grants this year, um, and green grants. We do still have some green grant money was, uh, twenty-seven thousand. So four hundred forty-five thousand in total programming, uh, which, um, really happy to be back at that number post, post pandemic, um, twenty-twenty, our funding was two hundred thousand dollars is what we were able to fund. So we're, um, making a good recovery there in, in fundraising and being able to support schools. Um, so the next slide, um, part of, like I said, what's really helping us to do this is Schools Rule. Um, Schools Rule distributions, um, in the ten years since we've, uh, been receiving funding from Schools Rule, we've received one point three million dollars in funding from Schools Rule. And you can see that's, you know, it continues to grow. It took a hit like everything else in twenty-twenty, but it is back on the rise. Um, and new this year, um, Schools Rule has a new equity fund that was established in honor of Mary Jane Burke. Um, Centerfell Heads Up receives the largest portion of that distribution, um, which, which really is, um, going to benefit, benefit us for years to come. God, they set that fund up. Um, they've already raised a million dollars. Um, and it's, it's not all distributed at once each year. They do a certain percentage each year. Uh, but it's, um, it's great. It's something we've been asking for, for, um, for several years with Schools Rule, from just doing a, a per student distribution to really doing more of an equity-based distribution. Um, just quick, now we, we really can't do it without our business partners as well. These are, these are the, um, corporations that support Heads Up with business donations, as well as, um, we include the, the Donors to Schools Rule. Um, so you can see quite, quite a few, uh, local businesses and foundations that are supporting the work we do and our students. And we can't, um, have this presentation without acknowledging what a great time Carnival was. Um, have to say a huge thank you, um, to everyone who came out. We had over three hundred volunteers. Um, we had an incredible support from our maintenance and operations team. They, those guys, um, literally just lifted tons and tons of tents and stages and tables and we really could not have done it with, without their support. Um, huge thank you to Emily, um, who also just does an incredible amount of work to support us in this event. Um, the feedback has been really good. I think people really had a good time. Uh, we, we did a better job of managing lines. We added more of everything this year so that the lines would be shorter. Um, just a few, a few of the photos from the day, but we'll be sending a newsletter out, uh, later this week with a link to more photos. Um, the buzz photos are always really fun to look at and see the kids and the families that get in the photo booth. Um, you may have seen the pony walking around if you were there. The pony was a real star of the show this year. Um, and also new this year, which was really, um, really a great addition is that we had a lot of, um, student booths. So we had the Tara Linda Mcel program there, um, um, showcasing the products that they created. We had the Davidson ELD Garden Club. Um, they were actually selling some of the plants they've been growing. We had Centerfell Athletics, talking about their athletics program. Um, of course, all the music performances from our students. Um, and then we had some more community partners this year than we had last year. And so it's really nice to really, oh, um, have it open up and a lot of our community partners coming in. Um, like the, the library, we had, um, Amy Farmer's Market, um, San Francisco Marine Food Bank had a table for information. And, uh, many more, many more. So really just a great community event and, um, we are really excited how well it works at Davidson. I think we're good for one more year at Davidson. Um, so we will, we will do that and then figure it out from there after that. Um, and that is all I have. I just thank you for your support, uh, for support of Carnival, but also of Heads Up. We are actively working on our board slate for next year, so I do want to just put in a plug for, um, anyone interested in joining our board. We, um, definitely need to get some, um, more representation so that all of our school and everyone in our community is represented. And for that, that's a priority for us as we move into next school year. So thank you.
Thank you, Micheline. Um, and I, uh, before we go to the board, I want to, um, open it up for public comments, either in the room or online. If you have a comment, please use the right function if you are joining online.
In, online.
Okay. Um, but anybody.
I, I do. I just want to name two people. One is Jenny Calloway. So back in the nineties, I was at her house and she pulled a lot of people together and her played brand new white carpeting. I remember that. It was fair that someone was going to spill some red wine. But it was all about really taking, um, the organization at the time to the next level because the threat was to lose the funding for music at Davidson, which would have had a terrible impact on the high school music program. Um, and then to see how that program evolved. So next time we see Jenny, we say, thank you so much. And the second person is Micah Yorin-Sgladi, who has a job before you. And, um, worked so hard to build it up from, um, to hand it off with good, good hands. And she was the one who really spoke about, with great passion about inequity of not having a full program at Davidson Middle School. And she then went on and became a board member and now council member. So look out. But I just want to also say thank you for everything that Heads Up does because you were the one, teachers were so, uh, stressed during COVID and working so hard to make sure that our students were going to be learning what they are supposed to learn. But it was Heads Up that made sure our kids had the joy that they had, um, with the different programs that you were able to run. So just thank you for that. Um, it made all the difference those years. And, and then we just new program with Mary Jane Burke's school, it's about them. So, thank you.
Um, Micheline, thank you so much. Carnival's amazing and all of the volunteers, I attended one of your meetings and everyone was just really gung ho. And, um, I remember attending, um, Carnival in two thousand and ten, one of the Andys, my first move into Centerfell. And so to see where it is now and, and I know that my daughters every time.
Win's Carnival. So thank you so much. Cakewalk Rock.
You won the cakewalk.
Come on.
Yes.
That's, that's what happened. Yeah. Um, so no, thank you so much for this presentation. Um, and I haven't had the chance to spend too much time, um, uh, you know, with you with some of the events that you put together, but I was very glad to see what happened at Carnival. So congratulations. Um, but I also wanted to put a plug out there for, you know, parents and all the schools that have their own PTOs and they have some of their own foundations. And I just wanted to say. And I just wanted to say that the work that you're doing is really remarkable because it does bring an element of equity around all the schools in San Rafael. So bringing the joy to all schools in San Rafael. And sometimes we think that some of these programs are funded by the state or funded by their taxes and that is actually not true. So we are really grateful that we have a foundation that is really trying to bridge that gap and making sure that those programs have bring joy to our students here. So just a, a plug to all the other parents that are also watching and are involved in the local PTOs and local foundations. So going heads up is also very important for the wealth of our entire school.
Yeah, Micheline, I just, uh, I'm, I've been so impressed by Heads Up and how um you continue to innovate. So partnering with Donors Choose and trying to leverage different existing platforms like that have been really effective. Um, and, and also, you know, it's interesting, my, my spot is in the Miller Creek School District and it is a completely different experience than that. Parents are explicitly told you have to give us seven hundred and fifty hundred dollars, seven hundred and fifty dollars per student. That's the expectation for their uh, for the Candy Foundation. That's not the reality for many of our students. And so when you give to Heads Up, you are actually giving for equity so that every student has the opportunity to have arts, to have music. Um, and so just to reiterate what Vice President Martel Dell said, um, it is actually the best investment we can make locally. And it's why when everyone sorry to the Candy Foundation, which I also um, but when people ask me, how do I help support education in Marin County? I say, you need to give the Heads Up because of the work you're doing to try to um raise, level the playing field for all of our kids. So thanks, Micheline. I really appreciate everything you do. And thank you to the Heads Up Board if they're listening. Um, it's a very strong board. They give a lot of time, a lot of effort. And none of these events happen easily. There's a lot of planning and thinking that goes behind them. So and all the volunteers, three hundred volunteers we got. So thank you. Keep up the good work and let us know um how we can help. So. Okay, um, next on the agenda is announcements. Um, so I, Tassie wanted to go last, right? Are you kidding? Okay, so I would like
Everyone.
I would like Tass to go first. You just took your AP health test. I'm also having to go first, so you have to go home.
But if I start speaking in numbers, I apologize. Okay, so news from Tara Linda. First of all, as I've been mentioning, AP tests began last week and continued through this week. So students are grateful to get support from their teachers before the tests with access to extra study sessions, practice tests and much more. We are so grateful to our staff and educators for all the hard work they put in every day. And this week, we celebrate them with Teacher Appreciation Week with days like High five a teacher or pray your teacher a flower.
Yeah.
Aw, yeah. But yeah, we're really grateful for educators at TL. We know how lucky we are to have such fantastic teachers, especially right after coming out of tests and feeling prepared. That's a pretty amazing feeling. Um, all right. Also, last Monday was National College Decision Day. And as our seniors commit, our community celebrates them and cheers them on their next steps. Tara Linda is so excited to see where our seniors will go and celebrate their next steps in many different ways. From a student perspective, I know ASB is, or some student groups are posting Instagram posts for people who commit to various places. And also from a more individual level, a lot of teachers are putting people's commitments or future goals up on their walls, which is a really nice way to have an individual connection beyond the like wider school um celebrations of where people are gonna go. Students are also looking forward to prom, which is this Friday, which is being planned and organized by our wonderful ASB program. And not really sure how to connect this to prom, but TL now has a spirit store. So go TL. Finally, we celebrate our, we celebrated our outstanding athletes last Monday, students who achieved highly in both sports and school. So congratulations to all of them. And we are also excited to celebrate Sarah and Wilder, which is actually today for their consistent, consistent achiever award, uh, which is essentially people who've continued to strive and succeed and improve throughout their four years at Tara Linda. My final thank you to Heads Up and everyone who made that possible. It was a wonderful event. I know a lot of TL people attended. We're also very grateful to the people who gave their time specifically from TL, the face painting booth, the wellness lounge, M. Cell businesses and Jazz Band. Thank you for giving your time and being part of this fantastic event. And maybe to Heads Up for every community too.
Thank you, Tass. Okay, um, let's start with Trucky Jackson.
Oh, okay. It's, it's Burton Street, went to the Chambers Teacher Recognition on April twenty-sixth at the Rafael Theater. It was a lovely event. And they also recognized our, our superintendent on his his service with our school district. And then I want to announce that on June first from three to seven at Embassy Suites, there's going to be an immigration celebration day. Uh, and I'm on the planning committee of that with first five. And some of, I've been working with Cecilia Perez to the Roper Inn with some, some items on that. So thanks for your support of that. But it's gonna be a fun day. It, it'll all be about the journey and, and um the celebration of um being here and, and being part of um of our community. Hope you can, I'll make it.
Thank you. Trucky, your team?
Yes, um, so mine will be short as well. I attended the Community Schools event. That was an all-day event and um congrats to that day and the team. It was a great great event. There are so many people, community members, teachers, principals from our community, from San Francisco, from the East Bay. It was just fantastic. Um, also attended the Carnival event, bakes and cakes. I also attended the Chamber event with my colleagues here to recognize Jim. And um I did attend the Glenwood fundraising event on Saturday and won the bronze tournament. We beat the teachers.
Yeah, and with that, I will pass. Yes, that great point about the Chamber of Commerce event to recognize um uh our superintendent that is gonna be, uh, unfortunately uh retiring soon, but there were also a couple of teachers that were recognized. Uh, one of them uh implemented our ethics studies uh curriculum. So Stacy Farrell was recognized. Um, and somebody else
Seven from you.
Seven from school works at Davidson. Um, so we're very excited that uh we attended that ceremony and they got an award. That was very exciting. So thank you for the staff that attended. Thank you um to the Chamber of Commerce for putting this thing together. Um, I also um attend, also bake cakes like my, my colleague, uh, my trustee colleague. Um, and I stopped briefly by the Carnival. That was very exciting. Um, and it not so joyful, but very important work. I also attended a meeting at Davidson with a group of parents who are very concerned and rightfully so, so for the uh very racist um incidents that have been happening in Davidson and that the district is, is tackling hopefully in partnership with a group of parents and students and families so that we can put some, some things together. Um, I was very excited to see that parents are leading a lot of these efforts. They are providing great input on what action items this school and, and the district overall can take. And I know that um the superintendent has put together a plan of things that are gonna happen. Um, maybe you wanna talk a little bit more about that. Um, but I, I wanna say that um we have been very much in touch with the superintendent to really ensure that when the transition happens with superintendent, because Jim again, is gonna be retiring, there, there's consistency and commitment from the board that the work that it has been doing right now um either is around education, it is around implementing a specific uh policies of the local and district level um that we can actually continue those policies once we transition to a new superintendent. But I know that she's been informed about a lot of these things and she's personally very committed to this. Uh, so I just wanted to thank the parents for really working on this. The students who have come out and actually expressed um uh what has happened to them and made such great um uh really raising their voice for them, for them and for so for, for themselves and their peers. So thank you. Uh, thank you so much. And I know that a lot of people within the district and staff have also been involved in this effort. So I'm very grateful that this is also happening at the staff level. Um, uh, something else that I wanted to mention that I'm also very excited, we spent some time this last uh was from Thursday, we finalized our fact finding. Um, and I really want to uh express some words of appreciation to uh the members of the negotiating um team who were uh really is creating and representing the district and some of this negotiation. We are excited that we have reached a tentative agreement. We cannot give details right now, but it's a tentative agreement with our labor partners. So we are um very excited about that. Um, I think I'm also uh I would actually like to also recognize that our, my, my colleagues, uh trustee have, uh trustees, we're all, um, we're doing our best to put our best um uh to put our best intentions around the negotiations. And we changed some of our last uh board policies and previous board policies to make sure that we could meet some salary uh requirements. So I'm very proud that we actually made some steps uh around equity for our teachers. And I also would like to thank uh our labor partners who have uh spent some time going through the mediation and fact finding and going through the process, through the legal process. And I am excited to see a tentative agreement in place. And as we are seeing all the districts in the Bay Area um in positions that are not great for families and for staff and, and um and, and their communities, I am glad that we were able to work with the superintendent and the negotiating team and our labor partners to come to a tentative agreement. And that's all for me. Thank you for saying that.
Thank you, Vice President Martel Dell. So um I also attended the San Rafael Chamber event. Um, it was wonderful to see our teachers honored uh as part of that event. Um, trustee Marina Palma was not able to be here today, but she asked me to get her board report. So I'll get that now and then I'll, I'll finish mine. Um, so she visited the San Pedro Elementary School and met with the two great principals there. They talked about different needs of the school site. Um, there, she expressed concern about the green area, wanting to make sure that kids would be able to utilize it. Um, she attended the Community Schools Forum. And uh she volunteered at the Heads Up Carnival. Um, said she saw trustees, my team there and um said it was a great experience. Um, and uh anyway, and, and also was very happy about our tentative agreement with SRTA. So um, that is from Marina. And um for myself, I just wanna say, you know, this um again, as trust, as Vice President Martel Dell said, we have a tentative agreement. We're very hopeful that it will be a final agreement shortly. Um, it has been a difficult process and I think one that has required a lot of trust. And I hope that as we hopefully move forward with this new contract that we'll be able to um to, to really be a lockstep with each other as, as things go along. So um, that's all I wanted to say and I will give it to our superintendent.
Thanks. Well, you guys said almost everything. I'm super excited about the agreement with our labor partners. So that's probably the highlight. Um, in terms of the carnival, um, two other things. Uh, Amelia Elmari is the principal at the A Vista and she has stepped down to take a different job next year. And so um we are gonna have you next time to appoint Mari Hernandez, who's the assistant principal at um Davidson, to be the interim principal for a year. Uh, Mari has a ton of experience um in Bonita Valley and the principal. Also, also worked at the A Vista's teacher. But she's very familiar with it and Mari is excellent at system instructors and putting things in place, which is really what we need. So um, we're losing Amelia. We're excited to have Mari go over there. We're in the midst of hiring uh a lot of other assistant principals. We had interviewed for Sun Valley's principal today. I think we have an issue boundaries, successful and Dean on Thursday. Um, those assistant principal hiring finish out. And then finally on Friday, um Javier Zamora, who wrote Salido, and we've been, you know, get all the book. Went to the A Vista and um Davidson and just a very inspirational um author is gonna be speaking at San Rafael High to our students on Friday morning and send the teams and then English and then right after that in Spanish. So I was super excited that you have been coming to this. Thanks, Cecilia, working behind the scenes to make all that happen. So excited about it.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Um, and next, we'll go to our, our labor partners. So do we have the FEA on?
We do. We have SRT, I know.
Okay, um.
I'm not seeing.
Whoever. Okay, let's go to Morgan and then is um Molly, are you speaking or is it gonna break your?
Brianna, okay. Brianna is also online. Brianna, if you wish to speak, you can raise your hand or I can just move the other.
Yeah.
We'll see. Hopefully, um, we'll see if this audio works.
Good evening.
Yeah, yeah.
It's coming in from my computer. So yeah, just speak. Oh, no.
No, I'm, I'm here. I just have a three-year-old ran in behind me. Good evening. I'm Morgan Agnew, president of the San Rafael Federation of Teachers. Uh, happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to the parent community for the snacks and meals this week. And thank you to the district in advance for whatever you've got planned. Most of us still regularly use the water bottles we got in years past and none of our members have ever complained about free food. And congratulations on reaching a tentative agreement with our colleagues in SRTA. After fair compensation and occasional cookies, something else that makes teachers feel appreciated is when our concerns are heard and acted upon. One of the concerns we have raised repeatedly throughout this year is student tardies. When a student is late to class, not only does that student miss out on learning time, but all the other students are affected as well. Class is disrupted every time a student walks in late. The teacher's authority and the sense of community in the class are undermined when the same students arrive late almost daily, repeatedly demonstrating how little regard they hold for their teachers and their classmates. To give you a sense of the scale of the problem, so far this year, across all three school sites, students were reported tardy over seventy-five thousand times. That means that on average, each of our students has shown up late to class thirty times so far this year. Anecdotally, we suspect the actual, actual situation is that the vast majority of our students, such as our student trustees, almost always attend on time and a small minority almost never do. As SRFT president, I want to thank San Rafael Principal Joe Dominguez for hearing those concerns and making student behavior standards explicitly including tardies, one of his three Foci for next year. And as a math teacher, I want to thank him for using the correct plural of the word focus. We recognize that every high school in the country struggles with getting students to class on time and the solution won't be quick, easy, cheap or complete. But just knowing that our concern has been heard and is being addressed does help us to feel appreciated. SRFT members are enthusiastically ready to participate in the design and implementation of a comprehensive tardy policy at all three s- school sites for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan.
Okay, Brianna. So the, she, yes, okay, good.
Hello. Uh, good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Hogaboom. I am Brianna Padilla, president of San Rafael Teachers Association, uh TK through eighth grade educators. And SRTA is extremely excited to share that we have a tentative agreement with SRCS in our contract negotiations after our twelve-hour fact-finding session this past Thursday. So we all, we were all there uh deep in the trenches, stuck it out. And we are very excited that we have the tentative agreement. And we're confident that this tentative agreement supports the best for our students and for our educators. And tomorrow, the bargaining team and I will be sharing the details of the tentative agreement with our membership. And voting for ratification will begin this week. And we look forward to moving forward and continuing to collaborate with the district and strengthen the longstanding partnership that we've had. Um, so we're excited and, and we are, are ready for this TA to be official contract language. Um, so thank you all. Um, and Molly's there. So you get to see Molly for the rest of the meeting.
Thanks, Brianna. And yeah, we are, we are all staring at Molly. Thanks, Brianna. And we, we too, as I said earlier, we're very hopeful that we can move from tentative to formal very quickly and um and be able to move forward and lockstep. So thank you so much for your partnership. Um, with that, at last call for CSDA, we
Saying that.
Okay. Um, moving on, now it is time for a public comment on non-agendized items. Um, so these are items that do not appear on uh on the agenda. So because we don't have a large group tonight, um, we're gonna use the normal, the normal group level not app for uh an amendment to our typical board policy, which is that any speaker gets three minutes. Um, and I think we have, we're supposed to not use more than twenty minutes, if I'm remembering correctly, for all, all of public comments. Yeah. Um, I know we have one piece of paper, but I wasn't sure if anyone else, uh, if you didn't sign in, wish to speak. I think, is on you also. I know you spoke earlier, but that's okay. What you, you've been here since five-thirties, but why don't you go first?
I'm happy to go last.
No, it's okay. Please. No, it's okay. Please. Okay. And then Jackie, I'll, I'll turn to you.
Um. Hi. I told you guys I'd be here. So here I am. Um, I want to first say, um, as a mom, as a black woman, it, it always challenges me to hear the pledge of allegiance in the beginning of, of any meeting. Um, the, the part that sticks out to me is with for liberty and justice for all. And so the reason I'm here is the justice for, for all. So, um, first of all, I want to thank you, um, Vice President Martell Dow and Superintendent for having that meeting with us. It was, um, I felt like it was a really good step in the right direction. Uh, a feeling of commitment from the board. Uh, it's unfortunate that you're leaving. I, I hope to have this kind of commitment from the future superintendent, the incoming. Um, I want to give you guys some updates on, on some feedback that I've gotten from the moms, parents, mostly moms. Um, so we had an awesome meeting with Dr. Lori Watson at Davidson. Um, the feedback that I got was, uh, was more like there were parents that were motivated to find out what else they can do. Right? So, um, I, I felt like some of the questions were very elementary. So we are dealing with the community of people who, um, some don't know that you can't call a child a black child monkey. Uh, others don't know how to talk to their kids about race or what age you should start talking about race. So the, there's a wide variety of understanding. And so the, the challenge is real. Uh, we do live in one of the most segregated counties in Northern California. So I don't envy this, but I'm happy to be on this path with you to figure out exactly what needs to happen. Um, suspensions, I had a conversation with, um, uh, statue at Davidson. We had a meeting about the, the number of suspensions that happened just within the first six weeks of, of the implementation. And it was twenty-four, not including the week of spring break. And this is suspensions that have a witness to it. That does not mean the people who have, who have been called the N word or a racial slur and didn't report it. Um, or were too afraid to report it. These were the, the, the incidents that happened where it could be verified by somebody else. Um, since the implementation of the suspensions, at least anecdotally from my son, there has been a, a, a decrease in the amount of racial slurs that he's heard. This is anecdotal. I know from other students, they are still experiencing quite a high volume. Um, I, there have been continued incidents at Sun Valley, uh, with, um, as we've talked about, there's, there's not a clear path forward with, uh, disciplinary matrix, which is something that we are going to speak about. Um, so I just wanted to give an update there that at, at least for my children, they are still experiencing it. Uh, with, with my son, it's not as much, uh, but it's still pretty prevalent. Um. My son is also being affected within his grades. So he was a, uh, he was on the principal's honor roll last year. And the classes that he was bullied in, he's now failing in. And so the mental health effect of these kids who are constantly being bullied, it shows in their grades, it shows whether they show up to school, are tardy or not. There's such a, there's so much more that these kids are, are dealing with and, and the, the, the ripple effect is real. So I, I want to, um, put that out there. Uh, and I am going to be continuing with, um, some meetings and projects that I hope to move forward with, to present to you all at some point. Because again, you will continue seeing my face and hearing me at every board meeting that I can come see. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jackie Devera.
Everyone, Jackie Devera. I have four kids in the district, two at Laurel Dell, two more up and coming. Be here for eighteen years. Collectively, it'll be like seventy-two school years across my family. So yeah, so I am here tonight to present this petition um, that within three weeks accumulated eleven hundred signatures from our Santa Fe constituents and community members in support of the SRTA and their proposals in their contract negotiation. And on behalf of the signees, I want to thank you for finally listening to the community uh, that elected to represent, elected you to represent our interests. Um, however, I'd also like to ask you to not make it so hard on everybody next time. Um, it's your responsibility to inform, engage and represent our community. And we shouldn't have to yell, scream and knock down your door just to be heard and accurately represented. Instead of bringing the community together, you've intentionally been driving us apart. The teacher is a community and even more so the Latino community. And it's unacceptable. I'm again imploring you to recommit to the responsibilities outlined in your policy manual and hold yourself accountable to the communities that you represent. The blatant disregard of your constituents during this negotiation process has heightened the awareness within the community of the power you yield and the unwillingness to use that power to the best interest of the community. We will be paying attention and if you continue to neglect your responsibilities, we'll take action more swiftly and in greater numbers than before. So I'd love to be on a happier note, but yeah, it also just was a frustrating process for everyone. And so I just wanted people to be heard that showed up and signed this petition. I don't know who.
Okay. Do we have any raised hands online for public comments or anyone else in the room?
It's online. Can you raise your hand, teacher? Saying done.
Okay, um, staff report. So the first one is the Together Twenty Twenty Four Blueprint Plan, the end of year progress update.
There you are. Okay. So, um, we're in the middle of updating really our teacher plan together in twenty twenty-four. Uh, the last board meeting, we did goal one on student success and those five, um, activities. And then, then also staff successful two and those three activities. So tonight, uh, we're hitting goal three, which is community engagement. And then goal four, which is systems and structures. Uh, so we will give you an update and a higher level on where we are with that, which is whether we achieve our goal. What were the key accomplishments for some, if we had any struggles or challenges and then some ideas for next year. And then we are also working right now on our LCAP and developing the LCAP for next year. So most of that is in Together Twenty Twenty Four, but we will also be bringing to you the next, the Latinx and final version of Together Twenty Twenty Four, which is new goals, new smart goals for next year. And if there are different strategies, um, what we want to do for that. So, um, with that, you can see the, 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 the first one is, um, community engagement. Um, that's the first one that's the most important. So the board identified supporting English learners and newcomers under student success, under staff success, providing quality professional development, under community engagement, including outreach and support for vulnerable families and under systems and structures, it's definitely multi-tiered systems of support for behavior. So, um, those are the top ones. And, uh, so I'm going to turn it over to Christina to give an update on first one.
Yeah, thank you. And Cecilia and Poli Pepe will also be joining, um, for this area. Um, so we, um, for our SMART goal for this one, we did use our, um, youth truth survey for our data, our data. Um, and we wanted to be able to increase our parent participation in that. So we knew our data was more reliable. Um, but the main factor of evaluating whether this, um, goal area was successful was looking at our engagement and our communication and feedback areas. Um, so we, I don't want to go into this too much detail because we did, um, talk about youth truth survey very recently. Um, we presented this, but just as a reminder, we did, um, meet our goal of increasing our, our participation by five percent um, in all areas except for high school. Um, so overall, we did need it, but we did want to, um, be accountable and transparent that it did fall at the high school level. So that is a focus we know we need to continue on in the future. And then as a reminder, um, the areas of engagement and communication feedback, when we broke that off by parents, it did rise um, in every level for both of those key areas. So how we, um, did that increase? We think it comes a lot, um, to our strategic actions that have helped us, um, reach those, those goals. So some of the areas, um, what we want to talk about is some of the accomplishments, the success and the outcomes. And I'll have Cecilia kick it off.
Great. Well, thank you. It's nice to be able to speak with you briefly this evening about the work that you've been doing to support our families. Um, so our, I'll start with D-LAC. Uh, we are very happy that our D-LAC participation continues to be really high. We are still having those meetings on Zoom at the request of our families. They really find that that makes a lot of barriers around childcare and transportation and kind of, some of them are, are literally on the phone. They're not holding the phone, but they're driving home from work, but they're in tuned, um, to our D-LAC meetings, which is great. So we want to continue to, um, you know, to refine that work and make it as meaningful as possible for our families while still covering all the required D-LAC topics. Um, there's some other ideas, uh, or some other things that we've had in terms of accomplishments. In December, we were able to take a team of, of families and parent professionals to the one day Cabe conference in Monterey, which was really great. There was a number of workshops of all around parent leadership, information on scholarships, information about the LCAP, you name it. There was, uh, there was a workshop about it that was really relevant for our families. We also recently went to Cabe. We had a team of thirty, uh, from our district that went to Cabe. We did not take parents this time, but it's a goal for next year. It was in Long Beach and there's some transportation. Logistically, it's, it's kind of hard. Um, next year it's going to be in Anaheim and then it's coming to, uh, back to Northern California. It's supposed to alternate, but Southern California is getting two years in a row for whatever reason. Um, but the good thing about that is a lot of the learning that happens there with our teachers and our parent professionals, our liaisons really does come back and they directly apply that and learning to their work with our families. Um, do you want to go into the digital literacy?
Yeah, um, one of our really key partners, um, is Parent Services Project. Um, you know, they have a lot of parent education and we specifically partnered with them on technology support for our family. So much of our world is transitioning digitally. And one of the big focuses at the beginning of the year, as a lot of people may remember, was we called the data confirmation process. Um, there was a number of, of important issues behind that, but it's, um, a process that they really supported us with at some of our key schools. Um, and they'll, they continue to offer support, um, after that initial, um, on September, October work. Um, just helping parents, um, making sure that they are receiving communication from the school and district. Um, and able to, to respond and communicate with their students.
Um, and then I don't have my glasses on.
I can do that.
Okay, yeah, do the.
So a lot of, and we'll talk about this more about some of our challenges and what we're doing for next year. But some of the really, um, successes were, um, expanding the what's happening, I feel like outside of D-LAC. It's, we don't want it just to be contained in that group. Um, so we did have some bilingual parent education events. Um, we did a digital wellness routine, um, at the beginning of the year. Um, that was open for Davidson and for a lot of our elementary and high school families. Um, and then recently, as you know, we have been working to increase our, um, parent education, bilingual and Spanish about addressing racist women in our schools, which we know we're just at the beginning of, um, and what we're to go.
Yeah. And then some of the challenges, um, Christina talked a little bit about the youth truth participation. Um, we didn't, we didn't completely meet that goal, even though we increased. It's, I mean, it's a hard number to hit because I think statistically there's, there's a small percentage of families that do the youth truth survey period, right? That actually, you know, return them. Um, but that's an area that we'll continue to focus on. Um, it's not listed there, but, um, coming on the new school year, there's going to be a lot of work around the data confirmation process, which is all online now. So we really hustled, thought was amazing and supporting, um, from the district level, the work happening at the sites um, to support our families and getting through that process. So that's going to be another, um, it was a challenge this year, but we've learned a lot this year. And we're already talking about ways to improve that process for our families next year. For next steps, do you want to do the communications piece and then I'll move into the parent?
Yeah, um, I think we have a good idea about how we can better reach our families and things that we know are, are, um, helpful for them to be successful. Um, but some of our challenges here were just capacity and being able to, to meet, um, our family where, um, we, where the, the work that we needed to do. Um, we know we need to do more videos. We know we need to do more communication, but we need to keep it simple. Um, we need to do more parent education events, but, um, just because of the, the, this different shifts we've had this year, um, we weren't able to get as much done as we could have. But that does bring us to our next steps. Um, we have that focused effort that we need to double down on, that I, that I need to and will double down on as we move into next year. Um, especially those, those bilingual parent education events, because so much of it is, um, it's happening in D-LAC to an extent and we want to expand it and.
And then, uh, on that same lines, uh, in terms of D-LAC, we really want to do some more work to strengthen and align the work happening individually at the sites, at their C-LAC meetings, um, kind of beyond this is your agenda. This is how to run a meeting. We really want to try and provide some aligned and consistent support for the people running those meetings, but also for the families that are participating in those meetings. One of the, um, ways we want to do that is we're looking into a series of parent leadership classes for our ELAC leaders, but it's open to other families as well. These ones would be run in Spanish, the ones that we're looking at. Um, we want to continue to be responsive to our families' needs. We have a lot in place. We know how to respond and we know how to connect to, um, to, to services. But we really want to take it up a notch and create spaces for active parent and community engagement to really foster those family-friendly campus, family-friendly campuses through parent education. Um, so I see a lot of opportunity with what's, you know, been shared tonight about how can we foster that through some of our family, um, parent education, specifically to our Latino families. Um, and then building programs that build leadership and representation and really draws on these community funds of knowledge that we have that we don't always tap into. There's a saying in Spanish, la cultura pura, like we have a lot of answers, but we just need to know how to kind of get them up and surface them and value them and then do something with that, create some action around it. Um, so we're looking at those classes. We're also looking at a three-day taught training for our liaisons and families, family, family support staff that would actually teach them how to facilitate meetings with the families at their sites that would create higher engagement, higher leadership. And just infuse a little fun into some of their, more fun than they are, we are, some fun into, enjoy into their, um, family engagement efforts.
The last thing I just want to add, um, add because it's at the top of my mind, at least as we get to re, the opportunity to redesign our websites, um, it gives us the opportunity to make sure, um, it is meeting the needs of our families. Um, it's very acceptable. It's very easy to navigate. Um, so that's something we can pay attention to as we design.
Good evening, boy. I apologize. My throat has been really dry lately. Uh, thank you for having me here because I have really good news that this afternoon we got an email that the community schools grant will go to the state board of education on May eighteenth. Um, so we're really excited that this work will really come to fruition once it gets funded and we move forward. It is going, it is on the agenda for May eighteenth. Yeah. Which is sooner than we anticipated because we were thinking it was going to be the end of May. We just said May twenty twenty-three. So that's a really good way to start this up.
Congratulations.
Hopefully, yes. Hopefully, yes. Thank you. Yeah, this is exactly what we were working for. Yes. So this year, we're really trying to develop the platform that's going to launch this work moving forward. For those of you who were able to attend the community schools forum last Friday or two Fridays ago, you could see that this work has been done and we have been doing a lot of this work before. But when you see these success stories in the Oakland and the San Franciscos with a very similar demographic, it really motivates us to continue to build partnership and to reach out to new CBOs, to reach out to others who can help us build our capacity and support our students and families. So with our strategic actions, you can see here that writing the grant was a big part of this year. Um, so one thing that we do want to continue is reach out to new partnerships. We have existing partnerships, but one thing that we want to do is build new partnerships now that we can fund more of this work and leverage some of those dollars. One key point that I will point out here, and this is number, uh, uh, I'm sorry, number five, the mental health component. We continue to see a shortage in mental health and this is an area that we continue to see a lack of supporting because of the shortage in professionals. And specifically even more the bilingual staff that we can't find. Currently in our elementary district, we have three, uh, TK through five school council positions. We had one applicant and that applicant was hired before we were able to reach out to get her an interview. So that is an area that we will continue to. Um, but one really positive thing that I can see for this is, uh, thanks to Cecilia, I work with Canal Alliance and Jim's email out to Jim Carroll. We have a meeting with Jim Carroll to talk about, um.
John Carroll.
I'm sorry, Jim Carroll, John. He signs my paycheck. I should know. I'm sorry, Jim Carroll, John Carroll. Wow, he signs my paycheck. I should know.
It's a combination between Jim and.
Jim and John. Uh, John Carroll, we have a meeting with him to talk about uh newly arrived students specifically in the high schools, which we have been hearing that we can't do it alone. Um, there are more students arriving that we really haven't the resources to. We're doing everything we can, but we are asking for help from the county office. So some of the key accomplishments, um, the creation of the advisory council. Some of you were able to come to some of those meetings. Um, as Jim is going to retire, he is down to a month left. When Carmen comes on and with your guidance, we'll see what the frequency of those meetings, do we want to grow it bigger, make it smaller? Um, it's an opportunity to have we can check in with our CBOs and our critical partners on that. And then the other thing is I continue to learn that each site is so unique. And in the K five, the middle and the high schools, so continuing to be flexible and adaptive to the needs of each of those sites. Uh, the key challenges, well, May eighteenth is better than I anticipated. However, um, we do have to post positions, hire people, create programs uh between May eighteenth and August start of school. So that is going to be a quick turnaround and be busy getting that up and running, but um, as we know, the hiring process, it's hasn't been as a people aren't knocking on our doors like they used to before. Uh, and another thing to continue to just um, I know this question came up last time presented the Murren Community Foundation's funding of our family centers, which were B A C R employees. We still have a phenomenal relationship with B A C R. They presented at the Community Schools Forum. However, as we transition those positions into C S E A positions, it'll be an ongoing conversation and we'll have to work out some of the uniqueness of having onboarding of some of that staff. Um, and then just going down the road from this, what accountability metrics will we put in place to ensure that we are doing a good job and we're bringing good stewardship of these dollars? Um, and then the other component that I will mention is Murren Community, uh, Murren County Office of Education has now hired uh Robin Pendley, who was with Murren Promise to be the now countywide uh technical assistance provider for this work. So it's a transition from Murren Promise to Murren County Office of Education. So these are all just things that we will have to continue to work on our relationships and our partnership as we move along the work.
The last in this goal area was about increasing school and district promotion and outreach. Um, our smart goal around this area was about increasing enrollment by five percent. Um, primarily in TK and K. So looking at where our enrollment is right now compared to what we're projecting, we are lower than what we're projecting. Uh, we will very likely meet it, at least in kindergarten. Um, and it's it's likely we might not reach that TK um projection as well. So we're not entirely far off. We're only about eleven far off um from what we projected. Um, so it's possible, but we were, we're always hope to to have more. Um, it was too early to say, but we should know maybe um closer to the start of this full year. A lot of our strategic actions in this area were about, again, the TK and K outreach to um preschools, um because this is where the children are now, but that is going more difficult. And um so trying to find other venues to reach families who are not yet um captured within our schools. Who aren't, who don't have siblings here. Um, and then this area was wasn't just about TK and K, it was just about our district as a whole and some of our targeted schools where we really wanted to refine and enhance the community. Um, so looking at some of our materials and marketing related to the districts and to the schools. Um, so I think we have a number of accomplishments in this area. Um, in the TK kindergarten area, we have a cleaner, easier, um, one pager that um we can share with preschools, with families pretty easily, can base all the key information. Um, I think a big success was launching our bilingual parent TK and K info sessions. We held one at Venetia Valley and then another one at the Givens, so they were open to everybody. Um, we had decent attendance. We had good engagement. Um, and I think we really got the word out there, so that's definitely something we want to continue. And transitioning to the the district and targeted schools. And towards the beginning of the year, you may remember, we did a lot of work um with our together twenty twenty-four posters and materials, making sure that um all of our staff and families were aware of the graduate profile and our goals and um we can got those out there and um, we've been partner with um the Marin Association of Realtors for um a presentation in H four at Davidson. Um, that was successful. We worked with them to try to do it in this spring, um buffer issues on it, I think on the Realtor side. Um, you know, it's been a bumpy world and then the Realtor world this past year, so um, we weren't able to make that happen, but hopefully next year. We do get, we did get some new photos, videos and drone footage that um will definitely be used in our new website and is being used in other ways right now. Um, and just working on um our our district communication and our identity. Um, making sure it's as polished and high quality as we can. Some of the key challenges, um, kind of like the last one, just we, I think we got off to a great start um towards the beginning of the year and as the the school year went on, my roles and responsibilities shifted at times. Um, there were different objects and transitions, so I I kept my attention to what I'm passionate about, which is this work, um, but wasn't able to to get as much done as I would have liked. Um, and then I acknowledged that the digital advertising um is really key for our TK families and that's really um an expertise um that exists that I don't have. Um, and that's easy to to outsource essentially. So I think um, that's something we can do next year. So that just brings us right to our next steps. Um, I think we have the opportunity with a new superintendent to really refocus and re-energize our district communications, or I look forward to um, doing that with Carmen. Um, of course, uh, the opportunity to redesign and launch the new website is a great communication promotion aspect. Working um with an expert in digital advertising, continue to host TK and parent sessions and possibly even doing more um and then partnering with the Association of Realtors again for um bringing them over to Davidson and possibly um, back to um Davidson. And then one last thing, I just want to think about using our our staff um more as our communication experts. Um, they're in our schools every day and they know what the great things that are happening, so to be able to turn to them, to be able to help share our story, I think is really.
Maybe we can pause there, uh, the community engagement before we hit system and start.
There's any questions? And before I go to the board, I want to see if there's any comments either in the room or online.
Yeah, and there's online scene now.
Okay. Um, any questions, comments or any question of it?
Oh, I just want to, I'll start a thought. It's an important step and this is why we're here.
Yeah.
Is to make sure this plan reflects what the community needs. So um, I appreciate the the hard data that the response rate on the survey went down in high school. Uh, and so we have to be honest and I'm, and that's why it was good to take out. Uh, so we care. The parents are telling us what they think. What what do you think is the reason for that decline of the high school levels?
It was really Santa Fe High.
Okay.
Um, and some of that had to do with Joe Dominguez being new, to be honest.
Okay.
And so we need to make sure we give them better support. I mean, it's a lot easier to do uh students and teachers. I mean, we should get a ninety percent rate. There are captive audiences that are there in school. But with parents, it's a lot harder and you'll see the the participation rates, you get elementary, you're hired and they're then it all and although the elementary did some bribes of kids to try to get them to get their parents to take it. So it'd really be more focused on making sure that, you know, when we get a new principal in, they're kind of overwhelmed with everything. So it was really definitely what I had to say.
Oh, that's good to know.
I have to follow up on that. Do you know approximately how long the T the parent survey is? Because I know a lot of people, a lot of parents work and maybe don't have the time to fill out a very long survey. Cause I've heard the student survey took me twenty to thirty minutes. It was a long survey.
It's about twenty minutes. The parent survey is shorter than the student, I think, is the longest one. Um, but I think compared to that, twenty.
So that's one on on that. So I just wanted to say I don't be afraid of sharing the the tough, the answers because it's important to see it. So you might have it, or maybe we need to give some more support in particular area. Um, on the community partnerships, never saw that community partnerships in schools is a platform for us to hire more staff. Okay, it's about partnering with our community agencies and supporting their work in our schools. So I hope that we we don't see this as a as a uh bank that we could draw to expand our staff. So if it doesn't work, that we can hire them, we work with B A C R and their staff. So it's just my, my, you know, it's bad community partnerships and more things.
We are bringing those positions in C S E A, so we are trying to internalize them.
No, I I just, but I, my my comment is the opposite of that. I'm saying the opposite.
Okay.
It's not a a cash cow for us to add to our staff. This is for us to be partnering with our community partners and their staff. So I just, you know, it's a different framework and and I know we spend a lot of time trying to bring people into work with us or be part of us. But we we really need to look at how to support because we don't want to be gutting B A C R from their very good work that we do. And they've been great partners. So I'm glad to hear that you're maintaining that relationship with them and that we are maintaining that relationship. That's just what I'm about. And then um uh, the uh, in the marketing, Christina, parents, I mean, we have for years also had wonderful parents step forward and say, I do marketing and they, and I know you've worked with them. Um, Coleman School is is kind of a model for that, I think. Um, but we have had that in other schools along the way too. So I hope that in addition to our teachers, but they've got a lot on the plate. But it's our parents who can, you know, the ones who are in marketing. So that's it. We also might have some new apartment buildings coming on, so not next year, but just in the back of your mind, how do we let people really into the new apartment buildings, units coming in, let them know about our school? And working to high school students. To see them. And finally, on the last one, racism is so important, but I don't know how many of you know that there were flyers all over the Ross Valley. Um, San Salmo, Cormandera area that were anti-Semitic handed out last week. And it's really affected that community. We need getting this AMFL, but it's prejudices with bullying across the way that um we just need to really be focused on. And so I appreciate the work you're doing well um on this, but it, you know, and and it is what we learn here. We can apply to all the kids, no, no child.
Um, well, I was just gonna say, thank you for the presentation. Um, I'm very excited about sharing about the parent classes, whether it's theory. I know that Glenn would actually just had a a class during lunchtime about middle's uh third grade through fifth grade and like media and social. It was just great. And even as a parent, I'm eager to hear any of that information. So I think that's super exciting to express that with our D LAC and um, I also am excited about the rebrand reimagination of the website. I think even as a as a working parent, it's sometimes hard to know where to go for information. So reimagining that is a great opportunity. And um, and I echo what my colleagues said about just really how do we bring our communities together and address the bullying and address the rest of it and bringing community together is so important. Thank you for that.
Um, yeah, thanks again for the presentation. I actually, um, well, I'll 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 start with the parent communication of D LAC in um the C LAC level. So I'm very appreciative of the work you've done, especially because you have brought both of you, Harmer, about you know, the idea that we need to have those things that are by law required from us, right? So I totally acknowledge that. But also try to bring, you know, some other information that is helpful for parents. But as Marion, you know, that opportunity, which is shouldn't be the only place, as you mentioned, is not the only place we should get. So I I appreciate the work that you're doing. I wonder if if, how can we get feedback that we're not talking at the parents, right? But how do we know what they want from us? So I would love to see maybe for next time, um, even if it's just qualitative data, those, I don't need you to come with like more data. It was sort of like, I mean, you are all so spread, like I I I can even ask you to do anything else. But if you can let us know, I want to have any ideas of things that you have heard from parents at these meetings, then maybe you're starting to collect and put together and say like, you know what? I have heard this parent during the D LAC meeting five times, not this is an example. I heard parents in the D LAC meetings or the local C LAC. They want more information about research, right? So let's just document that somewhere. Just put it creative in a Google Doc and just say, okay, yes, this is coming up over and over again. So what are the trends that you're seeing? So be mindful of the trends that we are seeing or the things that are being asked from us. Um, you mentioned you, you know, you talk to parents all the time, but I really would like to document that a little bit more, you know.
Just in first place to look for kind of a general idea, the actual D LAC minutes there are posted on the website. And we do try and capture as much of that feedback as possible. Informal and then sometimes there's formal feedback. So in um our last, uh, no, actually it was February.
Yeah.
Um, D LAC, we did a presentation on dashboard data and we also had some really honest and kind of some fiery feedback, which we needed to hear.
Yeah.
Um, just in terms of where English learners are bearing in the data and and the posts to their English only speaking counterparts. And then as a matter of fact, this Thursday, we're actually giving a feedback session breakout rooms for um the Youth and Family Survey. So, yeah, we collected formally and informally, but I do appreciate that to kind of go to the next level and look at trends.
Yeah, exactly. So we get the feedback. So I'm so glad that you are capturing all of it. But like, okay, so we're seeing the feedback around maybe parents, what they need is resources.
Yeah.
So maybe they're just having a hard time understanding what resources are, right? So then we give the educational parenting series based on that. Because some of it says what I'm trying to say, like, because you're so overwhelmed with so much information. There's so much people need to communicate that I, again, I don't want to put more quick on it.
No, no, no. Another, another avenue too is through our liaisons. We
Exactly, exactly.
And they really are the pulse of what's going on. So we meet with them Wednesday and then we spend time, we purposely spend time doing shareouts. Um, and then that also informs what will some of our upcoming uh, you know, parent topics will be in the D LAC aside from the required stuff. And then where are we seeing these arise?
But you know, it's common. All you're saying should be like, all those things that you're telling me that you are all doing should be here. This is super successful. This is great. I mean, the fact that you're doing that data, like we have collected, we are, we are being responsive to the community by
Yes.
doing minutes, by doing this liaison meeting. So maybe just even being explicit, because what you're telling me, it tells me that you are all being very responsive. So I would absolutely add it because you're doing it already. So I'm here telling you to do all the same.
Not our boss, but.
Because the pressure on hand to make it through. So, um, yeah, but this is very helpful. We do, we do. So we're, I've been trying not to make it long. The other thing I want to say is real quick, I have a little different perspective than Trustee Jackson around the the hiring. And the reason why I have a different perspective is is that, you know, I absolutely respect where you stand around relationships. I think that's key. So what that you're saying about maintaining those relationships. But I also felt like when we want to do rubber around services from our students, for example, I think when you have a staff member from a different organization and you want to keep notes about a specific student, about their families, just to give you an example, and you have agencies that are outside brings all sorts of issues around privacy, around confidentiality. So I do appreciate it. I just wanted to throw it out there. But there are opportunities here that by bringing staff, even though I think there's a, you know, I I totally respect where where Trustee Jackson's coming from. But I see that, I I, you know.
In the same age, it's been clarified. Um, with respect, there's, it's really not a gutting. There's three employees currently right now in our family center across the three sites, B A C R employees.
Yeah.
And they're interested in seeing, um, so i- in the district. And this has been a long, it's been a conversation for several years with the FBA um, around contracting out for work that C S A believes is new work. So this kind of community schools initiative gave us an opportunity to kind of relook at that. And, you know, at the end of the day, these these three B A C R employees can make the decision, right? If they want to continue with B A C R um, in a different capacity or if they want to, because there are also benefits for them to, for retirement and pension and so they're also, you know, then we still have a very strong relationship with B A C R around all of our after-school programs, our our uh
Yeah.
summer programs. So that's not going anywhere.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. No, and I appreciate the comment, but I would just want to I also felt the pain in our canal lines when I was there, somebody believing with the cap, right? It is, it is not easy. It's painful, but you know, it is, it is part of sometimes the.
The career path.
The career path. Um, so I I totally, you know, I I sympathize. And thank you for all the work around around conversations. I know it's not been easy with, you know, a lot of you know, support around technology. So, you know, trust me, we're trying to still.
Okay. Um, thank you so much to all the colleagues for especially the community-based schools focus work. I I wanted to um go go in a little deeper on the TK K conversation and I'm curious and data, maybe this is a Bob question or a Seema question, but where are we seeing lower enrollment for TK where we're not meeting those projections? Um, are we seeing it in a certain schools? Are we seeing it in certain demographic groups? Just curious if there's a little bit more about where we're on the little tour.
Yeah, I mean, without having the data in front of me, I know anecdotally that we were expecting higher numbers of TK students um in like the beginning of this uh um San Pedro area of of enrollment areas. And so that's something that we're trying to figure out where we're missing there, but that um, those would be the two areas that come to my mind, just conversations that I've had, and I could certainly go back to the board. go back to the board, uh, with more definitive data about where we're seeing this.
No, that's, that's really helpful because it's, it's one thing. I mean, my, my four-year-old is going to be, uh, incoming TK. Um, and, and again, different school district, but, um, there was not a ton of information given about, you know, who qualifies and everything. And especially for something that are, mostly are Spanish-speaking families who may be, you know, maybe newcomers, um. I think we really have to be, uh, working with our community partners to make sure information about TK is being relayed. And perhaps doing more videos and also just, um, if you're not familiar with what formal preschool looks like, I just, I can imagine like, having a video tour of what the classroom looks like and children are acting it with an outdoor play. Um, it just, it's, you know, it's a very, um, it could help try to bridge that gap a little bit about, um, the benefits that they would receive from, from doing that. So, um, happy to talk offline about this, but, um, I'm sorry, Stephanie, go ahead.
I just want to name, this is, I think it's an interesting conundrum that we're in actually the state. So we are seeing across the state low TK enrollment. And I think everyone is asking the same questions we are. And so what does that look like demographically? Do we anticipate it being lower this year and then having an uptick? When the enrollment dates are much more clear, like you're four, you come to TK, kind of like it was for kindergarten for a long time. I just want to name that this is actually, that research is continuing to come out, but statewide, we are much lower than anticipated in TK enrollment across all of California right now. And no one is quite sure why.
Okay, that's interesting. Well, I, I should mention I'm, I'll be at the delegate assembly, uh, for CFBA. Uh, this weekend, but next weekend I'll be in Sacramento for the weekend talking about this. So I will raise it with other, um, school districts throughout the state to see what they're seeing in terms of trends as well. Cause this is a topic that we periodically talked about.
And we have been partnering with, um, Gracie Hessel, with, um, Martin Community Clinics, is that right?
Yep.
Um, on, um, sharing information with their family, um, when they come in for well-checked visits and also doing a targeted message to families with, um, four-year-olds in that age area. Um, so we're hoping those, uh, help pick up our numbers as well. Um, we had, um, classes, we have, we have TK class at every elementary school, which we are proud to have and continue, um, and offer. And we have opportunity to adjust that to, uh, uh, certain schools as the enrollment allows. For example, we had, we had thought about allocating that at Sun Valley and the numbers are showing the need there, um, for those two classes, but not necessarily elsewhere in the district, um, at this point. So, um, it seems like that, um, Sun Valley attendance area, the word is out and, um, they are coming, but not much in other areas.
Interesting. Okay. Well, thank you for the report and, um, I continue to be very interested in this topic because I'm living it. Um, but, no, I just think it's, it's TK is probably one of the most important things we can do for equity. So it's super important that we, try to get, um, kids in the schools as soon as possible. So thank you for all this work. Everyone's move on to any of the other.
To the knowledge.
Yes. Let's go through this a little.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, um,
So we're going into action.
You come on, so it's the structure. So, um, that's a multi-tiered system, more support and behavior academics.
Um,
it is, um, integration and it is, um, facility-based. And so Susan is, uh, done an amazing job of finding, put some, systems and structures in place with our cost teams and things like that. So I will let her review more.
Yeah, we're trying to put systems in place where they were not really in place before. And really in, in doing that, communicating between schools, um, just to find out what's working and what's not working. So that's been an effort in itself. Um, when we look at our SMART goals for elementary, it's around the suspension rates in sixth to eighth grade and, um, disciplinary referrals. We didn't meet that SMART goal mostly because, um, of the way that we capture the information that's coming in. Um, we've been increasing our efforts around that. And I don't know that it was done quite the same way in the past. Um, and our suspension rates in sixth to eighth grade are over three percent, which is higher than what we were hoping for, for the year. So we are looking at that data and reflecting on that and making some changes within the system. And for high school, we, um, are at just about under three percent right now. I'm tracked to be below three percent for the suspension rate, at SR and T L. So we're meeting that goal at the moment. Um, but the way that those are actually calculated by the state is very different from the way that we're able to do it in-house. So, um, Cassie and I have been working on it for a few weeks. And so we think we got pretty close to what it actually will be. Um, our strategic actions were really around, the, the biggest effort was in developing our wellness centers and really getting those up and running. Um, so huge, huge kudos to our wellness center coordinators. Nicole Jansen and Judy Schwerin and, and Erin Watson at Davidson. They are amazing at what they do and they've worked so well with their site administration, with their counselors, with, parents and, and really getting the word out there to the students about how they access those supports. So we're really, really happy about the work that they've been doing. What they've also been supporting in has been COST, which is the coordination of services teams. Those are also operating at elementary schools as well. So we've been getting those teams up and running and, you know, as you can imagine, in larger schools, it's a number of different people that you're bringing to the table. And really trying to keep track on students that are coming up and, and how you're meeting their needs. Um, we also had an effort around, um, developing and adopting an S E L curriculum. I think you've heard me talk about second step before. So we were able to adopt that curriculum. Um, and our professional development is really an area that I'll talk about a little bit more once we get to the bottom areas. An area for us to focus on in the future. And let's see, restorative practices, we've done a lot of work there because we have our new, deans. And so we've been meeting with our deans and looking at our discipline data and our discipline matrix and having conversations around that. So our key accomplishments has been really getting our wellness centers open and running. We have served over seven hundred students with individual mental health services this year. So, um, our, our data keeping for our grants has been very helpful as part of that process. Um, the data tracking system has been a key, a big challenge for us. And it's something that we had identified at the start of the year and we had hoped that we would have been farther along the road than we are right now. So we have to continue to work with that data tracking system in order to make sure, um, it's going to provide what we needed to provide. So we're just about at the time where we're starting to, train staff. So we're planning to do a couple of meetings and trainings before the end of the school year. And then another set before we start the, the next school year. And then we'll have more data about who we're serving, how we're serving, how many students and at which grade levels and, and also notes about what we're seeing students for more than other things. So, we will have that. And then we'll also be, um, needing to have a conversation around social emotional curriculum at the middle and high school level. We'll, we'll have second staff in the middle school, but there'll be more S E L curriculum that we'll want to do. Um, and, and we'll also have that conversation at the high school level and try to, expand out from only the freshman classes where we're focused really on the health classes and doing like, cognito or suicide prevention trainings and, you know, really focusing everything in that class. But looking across the four grades and trying to, trying to beef that up. Um, and have they tou- touched on this a bit, but looking for bilingual staff for our wellness centers has been, um, a challenge. And so that's been part of what the work that our wellness center, coordinators have been doing is really just outreach and, and trying to get people in to, um, fill some of these roles. And also, um, communicating with V A C R about what our needs are for next year. And we've also been working on our behavior matrix, which I've mentioned here before. Um, and we're currently starting to talk about, well, there's differences, from the high school district needs with a behavior matrix versus elementary district. So starting to look more deeply at that work. Um, so you can see there's a number of things here that will be focused on. Um, we'll need to really, um, be strategic around what our next steps are. Um, but we know for sure that we'll continue with COST. Continue to work on that. We'll be working on training, um, our staff with eye on, and getting second step up and running with the, with the staff as well.
Susan, can you, um, minus what COST means? And I think the COST system is probably one of the more effective things that we put in place this year. Do you think, I mean, how that management will?
Yeah. So COST stands for Coordination of Services Teams. So it's made up of administrators, counselors, therapists. At the high school, we'll have the wellness coordinator be there. Um, we have in some cases, our CBOs joining. So, um, YFS is in, um, the meetings that we have at Davidson. The dean is there. Um, so what we have essentially is the entire care team at the table. So then when we bring up a student who's referred, they may be referred for academics from their teacher, maybe some behaviors are coming up. But then you have more people at the table. They may know more about the student. They may be able to connect you with services that someone else may not be thinking about. It's like all the heads in one room, everyone's thinking about that one student and how to, um, how to serve them better. And then they come back six weeks later and review the student again. So how do those, how do those interventions work? Are there others that we want to try? Who else can we get into the room that's not here?
And how does that differ from the student study team?
Student study team is a meeting that's focused on one student. So it's a, it's a student study team. It's generally led by an administrator or a counselor and the focus is one student. So that student may be, have already gone through the COST team. It may need a more intensive meeting with their parents. Generally, the, the parent or guardian would be a part of that meeting. So that everyone can really talk about what's going on and make some decisions about what to do next. In some cases, it may end up that it's a conversation around special education assessment. Or there may be more intensive supports the school can provide, but they may only be providing for students who are more at tier three.
So the COST intervention is more of the first layer than that could lead a further student study team if they were paying for it more pay.
Right. And there are some times when students get interventions before they're seen at COST. So there may be something like a teacher may be talking to an instructional coach and they may need support for that student. And so they try something out. And so that's just more data that if the student ends up needing more support and goes to COST, there'll be more data to share with the team.
Again, from my perspective, that, that was not in place before. There weren't, there weren't common forms, there weren't common meetings. And as I said in that chat, some of our principles, those, those meetings are very, very effective. So that was a good job of getting that.
Yeah. The question I have is, um, how do you ensure the diversity, that there, there's a diverse representation of the COST groups that, um, so that the student comes in, that there's people there who understand, um, the students.
So the COST team meeting is really the, the, um, the, the key student support members at this, at the school site. So the student is not a part of that meeting. They're the subject, they're one of the subjects of that meeting. So, um, it's, it's a diverse group in that they each bring a different set of skills and, and set of knowledge around what they can provide for that student. So a counselor might be thinking about what are some of the tutoring and academic support that can be provided? And then the wellness coordinator might be talking about, well, there's some intervention groups that we're, going to be starting that that might be right for the student. I'm not sure that.
Yeah, no, diversity in, in profession, but I mean, diversity in race, diversity in ethnicity, um, gender, you know, understanding. So is there?
It generally, it, it reflects the, the percentages that we have on our, on our staff.
Okay. Yeah. So I think it, it part of, I, this is something maybe Jen, you could talk to, but the, the, when we have committees like that, that, um, there are diversity, not just in profession, but in the experience that the professional brings. So that they can.
Cultural.
Cultural.
Yeah, I guess what I would say though, is, is we've said the ability that we have of hiring either people of color,
Yeah.
or bilingual people on those teams, that we, we just, so the COST team is really the people that are already working in our schools with our students. And for the most part, those are white professionals. And that's who, that's who our counselors are for the most part. Um, when we have bilingual, you know, counselors of color or M T F or whatever wellness coordinators can try to, do the best, but they're the kids that are those of the staff right now until we can hire, you know, more diverse staff that are working with our kids. So that's the COST brings in, obviously, you know, people who know the kid well, who can talk about their experiences with them. And we're always working on that, but, but hiring people of color right now is incredibly.
Well, right. And, and so this is really an important conversation. And so it's not that we have to hire the person if we're working with community-based organizations. And you said, you mentioned that sometimes they're there, they can bring that,
Yeah.
expertise in that we would not have before, if it's all white, for people sitting around talking about a student from another country. Or a student from, of another race. So, um, I think I appreciate that you said that. And I just really want to endorse that effort. That was really our intention in looking at maximizing what the understanding the COST teams have. Um, I'm glad that you brought this program because you're right, you didn't have it. And it's got it all over the place, all over the board. So, um, I'm excited to hear that this thing implemented across the district. And, um, but, uh, you know, it will pay off. I mean, our students not being suspended, but get the help that they need to use and that's acceptable.
Nice. Thank you. We'll, we'll take that. I want to see it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, Tyler and Stephanie are in charge of the academic part of multi-tiered support. So you got the behavior side and you have the academic side. So, um, it's close to one of them. If that unfolds.
Oh, I haven't heard that in a long time. Okay. So thinking about, um, the academic systems of support, I'm gonna, build on everything that Susan said, right? Because we know that when we're thinking about our students, they are here the whole child. And so often, not always, but often when there are behavioral concerns, we're seeing it some academic concern, there are areas or opportunities for growth and vice versa. And so coming back to that coordination of services team, that is core to the academic work we've put in place. And so having intervention teachers this year has been huge. Uh, it's been a game changer. Cassie just pulled for me, really, really great stack of data to look at the impact that we're seeing from our intervention teachers. And we are seeing an impact. And you have to have the system in place, the COST system specifically in place to be looking at, what are the interventions that we need from an academic and/or behavioral standpoint? What has been the impact of those after six to eight weeks? And ideally, does the student still need these or different ones or modified ones? Um, so just everything that we're going to go through is really building on that same premise. Um, in terms of our SMART goal, our goal is really, um, our students making a year's worth of progress in a year. Um, and, uh, what we're seeing is that we are on track. Um, we are really excited to actually be bringing on a new assessment system next year. We're finishing that work, um, in partnership with S R T A right now. Um, and I think that's actually going to help us dive into this more deeply. Some of this, um, the assessments we've been using, I keep on saying they're dying, but that's actually true. Like the system itself is going away. And so we're in this kind of funny space of having data that's not going to be data for next year. And we know we didn't have data during COVID. So we have this opportunity, um, but we are seeing that by and large, students have made three point six levels of growth between, um, spring last year and spring now. On average, it's three to four levels depending on the grade level in reading. So we're seeing that we're on track from there. Um, and then when we look at math benchmarks, these are also going to be changing. And we have more students meeting standard. Um, and so we're actually going to go through this data, uh, later on tonight, but that's kind of a highlight. Uh, when we think about the big steps in extra, Christina, if you can scroll down to the, kind of the key accomplishments. Um, I think the, the biggest system we've really put in place this year, and we're excited to deepen next year, is intervention teachers. Um, implementing really focused on reading. Uh, next year, we look forward to, uh, we have a little bit of math happening right now. But next year, we look forward to adding more math. Um, and, um, uh, we also have coaches doing newcomer interventions. So we know we have some newcomer students, who go to our newcomer academy at San Pedro and others who opt not to.
Who go to our newcomer academy at San Pedro and others who opt not to. And so we have coaches doing newcomer specific intervention first, um our newcomers across our district. Um, and then really again, and this should sound familiar, um because ideally we have all of these systems working in tandem. To support students in school, but is uh really getting aligned on our TK two five instruction. Uh, what it looks like, and then that's being complimented by intervention, and so we're coming back to that essential standards in our unit across our district. So again, if we have strong first instruction, then we can layer on intervention and we will see a greater impact. And so that continues to be a focus. Um. In terms um of our key challenges this year. It's really been trying to figure out who we prioritize and when when it comes to intervention. There's multiple levels of intervention and teachers are doing a lot of really great intervention in the classroom. The goal is actually not to remove students from the classroom, we want them in the classroom as much as possible. And there are times when that really is the the most appropriate next next best support for a student. Um, but really getting, being really intentional around that. Um. And then time, that is time in the classroom, time to revise and review to do some of the work that we need to do. Um, Tyler, did you want to talk a little bit about Avid before I?
Uh, I'll talk about it in a secondary.
Right, um, and so some of our next steps for next year, we talked about uh increasing math in our lunchroom across the district. So we started that professional development, we already have a curriculum. Um, we are excited to have an aligned um K three foundations, uh phonics. And phonemic awareness curriculum to the intervention curriculum, and so again, having that alignment is really gonna help support our students more. Um. And then we have an opportunity to really think about our multi-tiered systems of support. So the way uh those tiers, those those different ways in which we support students. And how can we embed more of that conversation in our professional learning communities in the weekly meetings or bi-weekly meetings? That teachers have really focusing on uh practice. Um, and so we're excited to continue to deepen those.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees. Um, I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the secondary goals around uh. Systems instructors. We made a decision to put a lot of the professional development in the staff support, so a lot of the professional development pieces we went over at the last board meeting. Um, and. I just want to start by talking a little bit about the the SMART goal using the DNF list. That is maybe the most blunt instrument we have. Um, and and an instrument I would not write a SMART goal uh about in the future. Um, just because there's so much bias in grading. Um, the amount of homework that a teacher might use is very different in uh one algebra one class versus another algebra one class. Um, so when we look at this, um this is third quarter data versus third quarter data. And the incre- there was an increase in the DNF rate um between last third quarter and this third quarter. Those rates usually go down quite a bit at the end of the semester, so this is kind of like the, oh no, I have a DNF. Mom or dad has a hard conversation with me, the teacher reaches out and those rates go down a little bit. Um, either way, it's a high number and an ineffective measure. And I think the work that Cassie's done around the the data roadmap that we're gonna talk about and you've seen before. Um, is a better use, so I think when I rewrite the SMART goal for next year, I'm gonna use different metrics that are a little bit more. Uh, easy to measure and more, I guess reliable would be the the way to put it. Um, as far as the the three, the two of the things in here. Um, Avid is the first one, Avid is going well, it's uh still high enrollments at both of our high schools, we're very proud of that. The students that are in our Avid program, and this stands for um advancement via individual determination. It's a program that we we partner with and they do a class. Um, that teaches them a lot of executive functioning, study skills, and they all have to take an AP class as well, so it really preps them for. Uh, college readiness. And we have sections at uh ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade at both of our our both of our high schools. And we've expanded that at middle school, and we also are expanding Avid Excel at Venetia Valley. And Avid Excel is kind of a long-term English learner. Um, support, and what we found at Davidson is those students are reclassifying reclassifying. At a higher rate than students that aren't in that program, so we really want to double down on that because it's working well. We haven't made as much progress with Avid in terms of having. School-wide strategies for integrated ELD, that's something that Cecilia and I are are talking about. And kind of wringing our hands about because we have very little professional development time and a huge need for teaching our our teachers. How to use more integrated ELD strategies. Um, and we actually talked about that at the meeting that we had over at MCOE earlier today. Um, a huge celebration is the increase in AP and honors classes. Um, this is something that we want across our school district to expose students to rigorous courses. Um, and we've partnered with equal opportunity schools that have developed an equity team at Terre Lynde in Santa Fel. And those equity teams develop a list of students who have high potential yet aren't in AP classes. And then they find out. Which teachers do those students have connections with? And those teachers connect with the students, say, hey, you have potential in in math, why don't you take AP Calc? Or you have potential in language, take AP Lit or AP Lang. Last year we did this only at Terre Lynde and they increased their AP enrollment for students of color by eighteen percent. Um, they've maintained that this year, um they they slipped by one percent, but to maintain. An eighteen percent increase after the first year is is huge. They have uh fifty-five percent of their of their students of color are taking an AP class at Terre Lynde. And that's really big, and they should be very proud of that work. Um, Santa Fel did the first year of this this year, and they've increased from nineteen percent to thirty-two percent. And these are metrics that are eat like more reliable than the DNF rate, so. Um, although the percentage of students of color at Santa Fel High is lower than Terre Lynde, um it has increased by. Thirteen percent this year, so we're seeing positive uh movement in at both schools. Steve, sorry my contacts are not working super well today. Um, so I think that one other thing that that isn't on here. That I want to add into the plan for next year is enrollment in CTE programs, another program that that indicates college and career readiness. Um. We are seeing increased interest in CTE programs, we have more teachers getting CTE credentials, I actually just spoke with one today. Um, and so that's something we want to keep a closer eye on. That's in our data roadmap that Cassie will talk about, we'll bring more of that to you next year as well, so. When I think about this goal for secondary, it's really about enrollment, like a structure to help students enroll in. Um, rigorous course offerings, so that's, uh, we're doing well on this, we need to have a better SMART goal that doesn't include the DNF rate. And the the DNF rates are an argument for standards-based learning. And really taking a look at our grading philosophy, which I know a few of you have been engaged in that conversation. We're having a teacher leadership team meeting on Thursday to rework, kind of do a final. Uh, touch on that, and I want to bring it to you all before the end of the year to kind of get your input. Before taking it out to some teachers next year, so excited about this work. Um, and still thinking about that DNF. Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, four point three is promote integration and ensure equitable resources and opportunities. Um, arguably, I think this is our most challenging goal, just as a refresh, and this came out of the equity audit we had from Ed Trust West. Was to try to integrate our school, which we know are um pretty segregated for the most part. So our SMART goal was to um identify high leverage and useful actions to increase the diversity of our elementary schools. To more closely align with our district demographics, that was one. The second one, which is a little bit easier goal, was um analyze our current spending at each school. To ensure that each student in the district is funding funded at equitable levels for pupil. Explore student equitable needs index as a way to measure the uh equity stat model, so. Um, again, number one, we partially, you know, integration is fairly difficult. We we look for opportunities, ready to do enrollment patterns. And really where we're putting TK and where we're not, where we're at kindergarten school, that's helping a little bit. Um, so I'd say that's partially achieved, but that's a tough goal. Number two, um feel really good about, um Bob and his team have done a great job of having kind of an equity index, so. When we look at all of our schools, we looked at how many administrators per student ratios, we looked at our highest state schools. Do they have, maybe they need to like, they get two counselors down instead of one, we had a dean at Venetian Valley. Um, because of their numbers of students, we added a hard time uh administrator at. Sun Valley because their administrator, the student ratio was so high, so some of it had to do with numbers, but a lot of it had to do with equity. So we've gone and redone that whole um plan in terms of having staff and budgeted school site. Um, so Bob did his team again for a lot of credit for that, so the second goal, I would I would. You know, we're gonna stay with it, but that's been achieved. Um, we did again look at our T K school locations. We now will have after-school childcare at every school, we didn't have that before, so I know a little adult in particular, they would say, well, there's. You know, sometimes people can go there because they know after after childcare and the equitable resources and funding. Um. So again, we have this spreadsheet that we share with our principals, it shows them exactly how many counselors and what your administrative chair is doing, you know, and. Try to make sure that we're supporting them with the staff they need. Um, through heads-up help, we have youth in our to every one of our schools, we have P G in every one of our schools, and so. Um, the enrichment is is equal across the board. And um our new TK school location, we're gonna be in the term and using an equity land about where we want to put those. So we'll be adding, for example, another TK class in Glenwood, and that will help to integrate that school a little bit. Because the give us the Ensen Pejo are very crowded schools, we might have one less kindergarten school there, so we'll give them a little bit more of it. But that's um, so that's a significant accomplishment, but it's also the easy one, right? So um, the challenge is that we did not form a task force this year in order to review school boundaries or look into magnet schools or theme schools. Um, again, this integrating school is incredibly difficult, and so uh next steps. This is really where I think the work that we've been talking about with race belongs, because it belongs to the systems and structures that need to be in place. So instead of putting in the 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 things we're doing for students and the student success and the things for the teachers and their staff success and the things for parents and their. Community engagement, I think we should put it all right here. So and I am working very closely with Carmen, I know that um we made progress, and I know that our parents want to make sure we don't lose that, so she with us on that. Um, I, this is one where we need help. Clearly, I mean, we're not gonna get everything in place right now, and I don't want to rush things in the last, you know, month of school anyway. So we're trying to balance and and our whole cabinet team is working on this, we're trying to balance getting a, having a sense of urgency about what we're getting in place now. And thanks to Ms. Ann and the parents, I think we're doing a good job at Davidson right now, especially with our black students. Um, including the education and the training and things that need to happen, but we need more time to develop a better. All fully developed program.
Yeah.
Systemwide, it's not an issue, it's thirty, racism is happening in all of our schools. So we're 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 actually listening, Tartokki from the Tam district, I think, has done probably one of the best jobs of implementing system-wide. Systemic equity, um, they have equity policy, they have equity team, they have equity curriculum. Is across the board, she's gonna come and represent to our team on on Thursdays. Uh, we've been getting proposals, Susan and and Tyler and definitely beginning proposal from a lot of different groups about doing this work. But again, we want to be really thoughtful and frankly, trying out some of them has turned out to be a good thing because. Some of the groups are more effective than others, and you have to have the right people leading this work, it's really, race work is incredibly difficult to do anyway. And so don't have the right people leading it, it's really, really difficult, so I think we're making, um, I guess by bottom line, we're making a good first step. Um, I guess one of my regrets, I would say, is pretend that we haven't done more in this area over my four years, frankly. Kind of started with it, it got pushed to the back burner, but we are where we are, so the best I could do now is to make sure that we have a really strong plan in place for next year. I think this is where it goes. So when we bring the together twenty twenty-four for the last year with with views and things in there. Um, we'll we'll come up with some training that we want to get in place, that we have to get, if you don't book some of these groups now, you won't be able to get it. But really, I think a um, I don't know if you call it a task force or um a working group, but I think using our parents, using students. Um, using teachers, using our staff, really, not fifty people, but a small dependable. Really hardworking group can help advise us about what we need to put into place, and so. This is where it goes, and we will begin to put this line together, but it's really gonna be up to you guys to help see if. Alright, so that's that one, um implementing the digital plan, um unfortunately because of time, we get to skip that because. Um, I actually talked to Sarah on Friday, but as you all know, Sarah has been out this year, so we haven't had a technology coordinator. A lot of thanks to Christina who's taken that on in terms of helping to lead. Of the technology department with everything else she's doing, so thank you, thank you for doing that. Uh, that's another one, well, we'll leave it to Carmen, if we want to hire an IT director, who want to hire an IT coordinator, who kind of been limping by. I don't know if that's the right expression. Getting by, it's not the way you want to be to do that, so we'll work with Carmen on what we need to put in place on that.
You can say that a lot of this, but then this is a lot of the nuts and bolts of keeping our schools functioning with technology and that absolutely is being achieved. Um, that's fit down things and and all parts to our IT team, I think we're moving out of the scenes, so. We've made changes throughout the year to increase our network and more changes coming over the summer, we're now capital facilities as we go into making more bond work, so. Um, not because of me, but because of our IT team, things are happening and our schools are um. Are functioning in terms of technology and moving along as well.
Alright, so the last one, because I know we probably need to take a little break, so I can turn over to Bob, the last one is improve school and district facility. Yes, like this should only take about forty-five minutes. Um, this goal was really around identifying projects that will improve or maintain. Our facilities, trying to develop a multi-year plan. Thinking both in the short term, what are we gonna do this summer, but also what are we gonna do over the next eight years with the bond program? Um, and then maximizing the revenues and funding that we have in order to, you know. Create these positive uh learning and work environments. Um, I I think in hindsight, I want to try to find a goal going in the next year that. That I can actually tie a metric to, and and I have struggled to to do that because of the nature of the work. Um, but I would say in general. The deepening partnership between the business office, the maintenance and facilities director, the capital facilities office. That uh partnership is stronger now than it's ever been, and and thanks to Bill and his team and. And Dave Pedroli and his team and and just really um collaborating at a level. That that makes us all feel feel really good about where we're going and what we're gonna be able to do together, so that in that sense. Um, I feel much better now, as as the ones who oversees this work, I feel much better about where we are right now than I than I ever have. Um, in terms of some of the key accomplishments, you know, the district made significant progress this year. Towards the increasing the safety and security at all sites, so we added things like reflective window coverings. Um, security fencing, trying to direct visitor traffic to the main offices. Installing lock blocks around campuses, um requiring staff to wear identification, um I still try to model that every day. Uh, and then increasing uh event security, full-time security, I can find yours. So we've just, we've we've done a lot, I think there's in our partnership with North Bay Security Group and Phil Wells, we've. We've gotten, we've made a lot of progress in that area, both from the training and then also just the infrastructure that's in place. Um, again, related to the bonds uh program, we did pass measures B and C and. Um, again, thanks to Bill Savage and and his work, that that bond measure is up and running and rolling at full speed. Um, really focusing right now on um TK and Davidson's, um you know, the big Davidson student center there. And also the aquatic centers at the high schools and just really that that is really moving quickly and and it's. You know, something to be really excited about. Uh, I talked a little bit about the collaboration that that has reached a new height, and that's great. Um, some of the staffing, sort of the challenges. Uh, again, related to staffing in our facility or maintenance departments, it seems like as soon as we hire. We think we're filled up, we've got a couple more people that leave or 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 get hurt or whatever happens, right? Um, and so that's been a challenge, just to try to meet the moment with. Increasing uh this, you know, facilities that are increasing in size and also complexity. And growing our department at the at that same rate and making sure that we're able to maintain these beautiful facilities. So that will continue to be a challenge, I think. Um, the lack of state funding related to TK and the implementation of TK is definitely. I I will cause us to need to shift some of our bond program for TK. My hope is that at some point in the the next few years, the state will come through. For TK, my hope is that at some point in the, the next few years, the state will come through with some TK dollars. And then we'll be able to, to reimburse ourselves and, and, and do something like that. Um, and then another challenge is just the overwhelming number of different funding streams that are. Coming at us and grants in all directions and just trying to make, make sure that we're being good stewards of those funds all the time. Um, I think next steps or proposed actions for next year, we, we've got to double down on our commitment to recycling. Um, at all of our schools, I think we do uh. An inconsistent, sometimes good, sometimes not so good job at all of our school sites. And we need to. Um, to standardize that and, and start figuring out how we can get past some of the barriers related to. Um, training of students and staff and, and, and behaviors. Um, and then as always, you've heard me say it about a million times, as, as the one-time COVID dollars pandemic-related supports. As those wane, um, our creativity is going to need to wax. Um, so.
There's some friction.
Um, and then um, just, you know. Always thinking about how can we be a better service to school sites and what do school sites need from us? And how can we provide that to them? So.
Okay, so any uh, comments in the room or online? Someone you're gonna watch? I have one. Yeah, I'm a school nurse. I, I don't work for San Rafael City Schools. I work for Marin County Hospital. But I was shocked that you didn't mention school nurses in the class team. Hmm, I know you're short and probably should have more than you do, but school nurses are an important piece of that. Maybe not for every situation, but. Okay, thanks for the comment.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, let's, let's keep it short because we do need to take a break.
Okay, I have two, um, and they're short. And it's just on the D N F. So that came, both of them are related to the equity study that we had done. And these were both, uh, both integration and D N Fs. Came out because those are indicators of, of um. Prejudices, racism, and inequities for our students. So I don't want to lose that with the new one. If all you're doing is showing us C T E or not you, but all that we're looking at is C T E. And A P enrollment, that is not getting at what the equity plan. Showed us when we looked at D N F list. And you're absolutely right, looking at a D N F list in the middle of the semester is pointless. Because we've all been there with, when you have teenager, you'll find out, they come in with a D and then you're exactly what you said. And so. Um, but I don't want to lose the fact that we have a discrepancy, we have had a discrepancy. In our students who get Ds and Fs by um, their background. And, and the only way you know that, and if you're making any difference, is if you count it. So whatever we've come up with on that. Um, and then the other one is on integration, Jim, the. The equity plans that our schools are segregated, we need to integrate them. Racism training is an imperative, but it doesn't address what the equity plan showed us was problem. Of having schools that are segregated. So I don't want to forget, you know, Gina had the idea of, of uh, intern that would actually do some studies. And we decided not to, we had a committee of the few of us and, and you and decided not to do that study. I'd like to see us do that study and, and actually have a goal that makes progress for integration of our schools. Training on equity on racism is very important. I don't know that it needs to go here. It might go up in student climate. Part. So just some.
Well, and, and just a comment to follow on that. So um, we have, have the idea to have a graduate student from, from U C Berkeley to do, do such a study. One of the things that Carmen has in her garden, she has a lot of experience with magnet schools and. Um, schools that attract, similar to our new immersion program, it attracts families to make um, worse rules. Tools of choice that could ultimately help their embraceable. So I agree, we shouldn't, we shouldn't let it fall by the wayside. Uh, words right out of my mouth. Yeah, okay. Another.
I just have a quick comment. I'm super excited to hear that there's going to be more math um, focus next year. And I'm wondering, how do we have parents know that? Because I think that's like the biggest, like, kind of pause as parents, like we. We, this year I felt like we doubled down reading because of COVID and then everyone's like, what's happening with math? And so how do we share with our parents that we're going to really double down next year on math?
So I, I think there's two parts to the question, I think. So let me kind of take them a little bit differently. When it comes to interventions that we offer, those aren't something we advertise because it's not based on parent request, right? If, if a parent comes to us and says we have. That's going to be part of an ongoing conversation.
I see.
Right. So, so that's kind of one piece because at a school site, they're looking at. All, all of the students, they're trying to figure out with these resources. What are interventions that best support students in the classroom? When do we decide to pull a student out for intervention? So uh, we want to hear from parents. When things are going well and when they're not.
Right.
And it's part of a broader conversation.
Right, right.
So if, if we were recommending a student for intervention, that would absolutely be a conversation with a parent. The same way if a parent requested it. We would look at the, kind of the school and grade level and the whole and then see. And then in terms of academics, one of, like, kind of tier one general instruction. One of the things we're really focusing on is continued alignment in our mathematics instruction. So we have an adopted curriculum. If teachers aren't using it from grade to grade, we are going to continue to see gaps. And so that continues to be work we need to focus on. That actually came up in uh, A P interviews this morning. And one of the teacher's responses was, one of the reasons our school does really well on math is because. Everyone teaches in alignment. So that needs to continue to be first best instruction. And then when the new math framework comes out. Um, then we'll look at a math adoption and then the continued work we're doing with California Ed Partners in elementary. Uh, we have some really exciting practices coming out uh, that will continue to, to grow. A number sense with our students. I know those two parts.
That's right, that's right. Thank you.
Moving on. Okay.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, okay. Okay. Um, it's eight twenty, let's take a five-minute break and then we'll come back to here. Um, the next thing I'm alleging is education services, the local indicator data. Five minutes.
Yes.
Line? You're online. Alright, um, good evening. I am West Kristen Musiamat Talda. For those joining the line, I am going to be presiding this meeting. Because our president Gina Daly is out sick for the eve, rest of the evening. Um, we have one item uh, with staff reports that we deal, we don't have to hear from, um, education services about our local indicator data updates. So. Hi, yes, hi.
Uh, thank you for welcoming me and thank you for giving me time after an already long evening. Um, I appreciate it. I'm going to try to make it a little sweeter. Um, but as we know, data is interesting to me and it's interesting to you and sometimes we get in on the week. So we'll just try to keep each other on track. So this is the follow-up um, presentation to our information that we shared in the fall. We are trying to keep our data presentations organized around our academic roadmap. There are new metrics, but they are the ones that we were not able to present data on. In the fall, so it is the same roadmap. As a reminder, this is a message that I'm working on sharing with everyone, including my assessment committee and the teachers on my assessment pilot. The primary reason we assess our students is to inform our instruction and to ensure that our students are getting what they need to be successful. Um, secondary purpose is to share progress with families and other stakeholders such as you. Um, and then finally, there is state and federal accountability that we um, have to do because we are a public education agency. We assess students in a variety of different ways. We've talked about all of these. We are also in the process of an assessment pilot in our elementary. So K five, looking at a kind of a streamlined diagnostic benchmark that I would be happy to talk about. Later, if you want it, but um, it would be one of the diagnostic assessments in the top right corner. So it'll tell us what students know and what they're ready to learn. Not whether or not they are on grade level. So it's a little bit, the different way to look at um, benchmark gap. This is our academic roadmap. I took it from the gloomy color scheme of the fall and winter to the bright new together twenty twenty four colors. Thanks to Christina. So this is going to be a cheerier academic roadmap because it is a happy road to graduation. Um, as a reminder, we have seven indicators along the way. In kindergarten, we are looking for students to have demonstrated mastery of foundational literacy and math skills. By third grade, we're looking for students to demonstrate proficiency on at least one of two local assessments. Next year, that might just be on our new more comprehensive reading assessment. Um, we're looking for sixth graders to be on track to be proficient mathematicians because that's where math. Um, starts to branch off, which can lead down the road to A T calculus as test is in or to. A different math road. Um. Step four is actually three indicators in one. We're looking in ninth grade for our ninth graders to be passing three core classes. English nine, algebra one, and then the introductory science course, which is different at T L, it is biology. And at S R, it is um, physics of the. And at SR, it is physics of the universe. The fifth indicator is that we are looking for 10th graders who are on track to meet A to G eligibility. This is an indicator I did not share with you in November. It is reliant upon a feature of areas that our counselors are starting to use this year and plan to use fully next year called the academic plan. So it takes a look at what students have already taken, what they are currently taking and what they plan to take over currently during their high school career to see what their entire coursework would be if they pass everything that they plan to take. We are also looking at 11th graders who are enrolled in a CTE pathway and/or A T coursework. We wanted to give students a variety of ways to show success and to show rigorous course enrollment. And then 12th graders who are on track to graduation, again, that's using the academic plan, but it's a little bit closer because students are already have already taken most of the coursework that they will take during their high school career. I'm going to talk about some trends and then get into the data. Academically, we're noticing that there is consistent growth from fall to spring with foundational literacy skills for all student groups. The growth looks a little bit different, but all student groups are making growth. Third graders are shifting from the lowest not proficient band to the approaching proficient band. So we're not necessarily seeing a lot of growth in the proficient band, but we are seeing shifts up. Sixth grade math is a developing metric. The data is a little bit rough right now, but it is a new assessment based on N W A map assessment, which is brand new to our middle school teachers and students. And we are looking at projected proficiency on tests so that they hide our. The majority of our ninth graders are passing their three core courses, but never E Ls do outperform everybody else across metrics. And we are continuing to improve our assessment and our data collection for more complete metrics. So as we continue with this academic roadmap, the metrics will be more comprehensive. They're not going to change in spirit, but the data will become more solidified. For course enrollment, because we know that academic performance is only one piece of student success. Course enrollment, we have at least seventy percent of our ninth graders enrolled in all of the core courses. But E Ls are more likely to be enrolled in the prerequisite courses such as algebra A and B, E L D courses instead of English nine or intro to science practices. More than a third of our 10th graders are on track to be A to G eligible upon graduation. We expect that number to increase as more counselors are using the academic plan because if a student could not have an academic plan, the areas cannot tell us they're on track. More than half of our 11th graders are currently enrolled in English coursework through A T or C T courses. And most of the 12th graders who are not currently on track for graduation have plans to complete the coursework either through alternative programs such as Fuel or through a fifth year in our high school. So with that, I'm going to get into the data. This dashboard is a little bit different. Again, brighter colors. It is also getting a little bit easier to interact with. So this is our data overall, all of our students. And you can see with our kindergarten literacy skills, this green band of proficiency has just steadily increased from fall to winter to spring. We do have a large number of students who have no assessment data entered. A large part of that is because this assessment relies on teachers to not only test their students and use the data, but then also enter it into the computer so that I can use it. And so hopefully with our new assessment system, that will decrease that that gap. With third grade literacy, as we showed you, we're moving out of this red band into the blue band. So while our green band kind of stayed steady from fall, winter to spring, we are seeing some movement towards proficiency, which is good. Sixth grade math, developing metric. It's something that we're going to keep an eye on, but I also want to give the students and teachers another year to frame the assessment the right way. Yeah, it does not. It doesn't look great, but it is a new a new assessment, so we are working on it. These are all three of the ninth grade data sets. So this red is prereq. That's algebra A, B, algebra readiness. So students who are not in algebra one. This salmon color is students who are in algebra one but failing, receiving a D or an F currently. So this is where the D and F list shows up. Green are passing and then the darker greener students who took algebra one in eighth grade and are now in geometry. So they're in an advanced math track. English nine, same concept. E L D is kind of acts as a prerequisite because students who are not ready to enroll in English nine might be in E L D. And then we do have seven percent of our total population, our total ninth grade population in E L D instead of English nine. These are the students who are failing and then these are the students who are passing. So seven, you know, three quarters of our students are passing English nine, which is good.
Yeah.
I know it's it's easy to focus on the red and not so easy to focus on the green, but those were pretty good. Science, six to seven percent of our students are not enrolled in ninth grade science. Science is not a subject that requires four years of enrollment. And so some students are choosing to enroll in the engineering and tech design CTE course, for example, is one area I know of a lot of students. But of students enrolled in ninth grade science, again, about seventy percent are passing. About twenty percent are failing. And then we've got this very small percentage who are in the intro to science practices, that red line. And those are students who are generally newcomers or early, early recent immigrants to our country who didn't have science in middle school. And so they're taking in intro to science practice. If we want to look at some student groups, this is what our data looks like and how it changes when we look at English learners who are not newcomers, which means that they are English learners who have not arrived in US schools in the past number of years. So you can see that even the even the students who are not newcomers, a lot of them are in the prerequisite algebra classes. A significant number are, you know, they're in English nine, but it's about fifty fifty. So whether they're they're passing or failing right now. This dark blue gets bigger when we're looking at our E Ls. That's F B C. So students who are in special ed curriculum that are not in the new course work. Similar, when we look at the elementary metrics, but you can still see that nice increase from fall to spring with our kindergarten foundational literacy skills. You can still see somewhat of an increase in the from from not proficient to approaching proficient in third grade literacy. So that's promising. But as we know, we have work to do with our English learners and that has been brought up multiple times throughout tonight's presentations. When we look at our ever E Ls, so that is our English learners and our students who have already been reclassified, it's a little bit better. But it is not what we see when we look at our never E Ls, which is our students who speak English as a first language or students who were may speak a different language at home, but test will initially do it when they first enter California public schools. The last group to look at, which I know has been a special focus for Cecilia, is our dual identified students. So these are students who are both English learners and students with disabilities and they are impacted in some pretty significant ways and you can see that reflected in our dashboards. But even still, you see this nice increase of our discrete foundational skills in kindergarten, which shows that the instruction that we're doing and the assessment that we're doing to measure those is having effects even on our most significantly impacted students. The next the next page is our high school metrics. So we have our 10th graders, our 11th graders and our 12th graders. The 10th graders, as I said, right now we have about thirty seven percent, but this is entirely reliant on that academic plan feature, which is new for many of our counselors this year. So there we expect there are many more 10th graders who are planning to be A to G eligible upon graduation, but their future plans are not documented in our system. And so therefore they're not reflected. But we wanted to bring this to you as a baseline and then as we build up that use of that feature, we will show you more improved data. This is based on current course enrollment. So students who are, as of the data poll, two weeks ago, enrolled in A T or C T courses. You can see that five percent of the 11th graders are at Madron where there is no A T or C T, so they're not available to them or they're at Bridge. So the offering is not available to them. Thirty eight percent of the students are not enrolled in either of these, although it is an option at their school. Whether their grades or past experiences would make them eligible is not included in this data. We have seven percent of our 11th graders who are enrolled in C T coursework, thirty five percent who are enrolled in A T coursework, and then fourteen percent who are actually enrolled in both A T and C T coursework at the same time. So I know that both of these enriched educational opportunities are something that we're working on with our high school administrators to bring out to larger student groups and make them more accessible and build in the supports so that students not only enroll in these challenging courses, but are actually successful in challenging course courses. The 12th grade graduation readiness was surprising to Tyler when we looked at it because we are within a month of graduation. So sixty eight percent of our students are already ready on track, good to go, as long as they pass the courses. Now they're good to go. Hundred and twenty one, sixteen percent of our students are in Bridge, which is a program that is not designed for them to graduate at the end of their 12th grade year because it is designed as a bridge into our community and most often involves either a year after senior year or a transition to adult ed. This sixteen percent of students are 12th graders who are currently not on track to graduate. What we did is as soon as we saw that, Tyler said, give me the list. I'm sending it to our high school administrators. So we sent it to our high school administrators and counselors and within 24 hours, both teams had shared the list they had gone by student and shared what their plans were. The majority of the students who are on this list are currently taking courses through Fuel or through other online programs or are completing elective credits through work, work experience. And so it would need to turn in paperwork to get it all documented. There were very few students on the list who have no plan and there's a lot of students on the list who were, had less than four years with us. So they came as 10th graders, they came as 11th graders, and many of those students are planning to enroll for a fifth year. That, when we look at the California dashboard metrics, those students who enroll in a fifth year at high school count against us in their fourth year. So they are considered not graduates. And then the following year when they do graduate as fifth years, they're added to both the numerator and denominator of our graduation rate. So just, we wanted to give you the data so that you can expect what to see, but that number is going to change when all of our students transcripts are turned in, when summer school is completed and when Fuel is completed. Again, looking at the same student groups, these are our English learners who are not newcomers. There are, surprisingly, there are six students who are not newcomers who are in Bridge. Most of them, I looked at them specifically, they entered as 10th graders at one of our comprehensive high schools and then transferred into Bridge as 11th graders in its first year. We have a lot of students who are not participating, but we do have seven English learners participating in C T E coursework and one participating in A T coursework as in 11th grade. Not great, but it's something. And then again, similar here, we see a shift towards not on track. That's something that you can keep an eye on. Looking at our ever E Ls, so E Ls and reclassified students, we actually see kind of a larger percentage of those students who are on track for graduation, which might just be due to a shift in the students who are in Bridge. But we see about half, two, a third of our students enrolled in enriched coursework. And about a quarter of them are prepared for A to G eligibility based on their current academic plans. When we look at our never E Ls, again, that shifts. Seventy five percent of our never E Ls are in 11th grade are engaged in one or more types of enriched curriculum. And about fifty six percent are prepared for A to G eligibility. And the last student group I wanted to show you is the dual identified student group. Again, this is our most impacted student group. The numbers are smaller. So you can see we have thirty five in ninth, 10th grade, twenty six in 11th grade and thirty six in 12th grade. So the end size is significantly different. But that is our data we wanted to share with you. Back to the presentation, what is in the presentation is the all student groups. So you'll you have that. The interactive dashboard is something I'm happy to share with you and we can click and change different filters. There's a lot of different ways to look at it, including gender and economic socioeconomic status and everything like that. So that all exists. We just didn't want to talk forever. So what I'm doing, very similar to what you've seen before. One thing, we finished the foundations pilot for those foundational skills becoming a part of our first and best instruction in kindergarten, first and second grade and third grade. So K three. So that's going to come next year. And then, as I said, I am wrapping up an assessment pilot. Thank you, I T team for helping with iPads and everything. So we're hopefully hopefully going to be able to bring you request for adoption or I don't know what the official language around it is.
Contract for approval.
Contract for approval in June at some point, once the pilot is completed and my committee has made their decision. In secondary, again, many of the same things we've already talked about, but the counselor PD hatching results is something that our high school counselors have been participating in all year. It focuses very heavily on the importance of an academic plan so that students are able to see kind of long term what they're planning to do for their high school career and also so that people can intervene sooner if things are going off track rather than waiting until senior year when it might be too late to change the direction of the ship. So we have now done four presentations. This is our final update. We have three options for you. I can either come back in June and get feedback from you then. We can wait for the fall to see how you want to change this. Or we can say, we loved it, Kathy. This is perfect. There's no changes, no recommendations, no notes, and I can just do the whole thing all over again in next year. So that is the timeline for you. And then any questions, concerns, comments, et cetera. Thank you. Bye.
Talk fast. It was great. It was absolutely great. I appreciate you going through it. It's a lot of data. So I don't know from trustees, who would like to start? I just have a great question. Who am I?
Thank you. So I'm really excited to hear about the academic plan. And, you know, I tell a million years ago, so I don't know if that still applies, is that from what I remember, the earliest, the earlier we could have conversations with students about A to G is super critical. And just give me a little positive like at 10th grade. So that's just one question. My second question is, I've always remembered that math tracks our students. And so that is what just give me, I keep bringing up math, 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 because it gives me just a little bit of pause because when you look at the population of the students we have in our community, I just, I keep bringing up math and I'm excited that we have academic support and we have all of these things, but yeah, that's just like what I would love to let. It's not anyone. It's just like I, I, math stresses me out.
I appreciate that. I, for A to G, the academic, we're choosing to focus on 10th graders because we have the ninth grade core coursework, but the counselors are planning to start the academic plans with students as they enter high school.
Right.
And I know if we had a unified district, they could even start, Barry's has the capability to do a seven year plan, but because we have a split between our districts, we're not able to do that. So we have a four year plan is where we are right now, but they're planning to do that with my students when they enter. And we're just going to be doing a dipstick in 10th grade to share with you.
Thank you for that. Cause I always remember in eighth grade, that's when you start your roadmap, right? So when I heard 10th grade gave me the like.
We're going to start the conversation with students earlier and we're going to give them a year to kind of settle in and then we'll bring the data to you. And as for math, we know that it's a concern. That's why we chose sixth grade because that's where paths start to diverge in our current system. In our current system. Um I know Tyler is looking at tracking as well, so it is something that we are also concerned about and. We'll be continuing to report to you and work with you.
Thank you. Thank you for your partnership. This is not like a, you know, this is.
I don't feel like I would.
That's okay. Thank you.
Trustee Jackson.
Okay, yeah, I just, I I love to team. I know you guys work so hard at this and and you spend a lot of time with us to help us understand. Is this online for for people to see? So dive into?
Not yet, although I am much closer to it, but I'm working the fall. I have a program that is available. What we want to do is be able to talk to Carmen and see how she wants to do that. And then also with the website changing, we kind of wanted to pause. But it is something that we have in the back of our minds to learn parts when we get.
That's a good point. Just so just a couple of thoughts, you know, I mean, A two G is very important.
Hmm.
I know with Marin promise, they started out that a hundred percent of all the students in Marin County are gonna be A two G.
Hmm.
But you know, when you look at our school district and you go to some students who. They're not A two G.
Hmm.
And maybe they will be, maybe they won't be, but we have to have room for the students. That if they are not A two G, they're okay. They they realize that themselves, that they're not failures because they don't. So I don't know how that's reflected in this, but do we have a target that eighty percent are A two G? Of all groups, if you're an English learner or you arrived at three years, I would think not. Um so I just just I I'd like to know how you how you sort that.
The way that I think about it right now um is that this isn't necessarily goal setting. This is kind of a report card. So this is showing where we are. Um the goal setting will come out through together twenty twenty four and I don't know if A to G is within there. And it also comes out through our own map. So I will leave that decision to the people who write those plans. For now, um we're choosing to look at A to G because it is a metric. We're also choosing to look at um CTE and AP coursework um because it's a different vector. And so students might. Might be green on one and red on the other or vice versa.
Or neither.
Or neither. And so this is.
If you're dying.
Yeah, so this is just a. A report, a report card.
A report card. Thank you.
So on the report card um for engagement. We we don't really talk about electives or enrollment and electives or participation scores. We spend a lot of time about health, mental health, which is very important. But you know, we're we're not in a full employment, full enrollment, mental health program.
Right.
We want kids to be engaged and if they're engaged, they may not need so much mental health. So how do we? Uh the we're not counting that. We're just doing math and English and A two G and and total um academics.
Yes, I know that I keep, I'm putting a lot on this eleven grade metric. Yeah, but I really do feel like students who are choosing to participate in this pathway and have those packages available to them or are choosing to, you know, take their time on a. Monday morning and taking an A three thousand. It's Monday, Monday morning, taking A two G test. I admire her. Um I think that that is a measure of engagement, but I do take the feedback and think that I'll put it in my.
Yeah, it's it's those are very important metrics, but not um being able to enjoy the the creative part of life.
Yeah.
This is a part of life is very important. So hopefully. Know that um you know, eventually I'm going on sports, what's the percentage of girls and boys?
Yeah.
Um and patina girls, are they? So anyways, that's the the engagement part. And then how do we get to reading by third grade or end of second grade, end of third grade? And the reading is such an important um metric and I. I'm not. Pretty sure how that is. I mean, we're talking about foundation, measurement, little ones. For the little ones.
How do you measure it or how do you?
How is it captured in the data up there? How do we know that um kids at the end of third grade are reading?
For this, um currently we're using two metrics. We have F and P, which is uh.
Yeah.
Teacher directed, yeah, on the signal. And we also have reading inventory, which is a computer.
Okay.
Assessment. So students can be proficient on one or both. Um and then they would show those provisions.
So that's our, so our third grade, we just say one or two local assessments. We don't wanna add four reading. So so that the community knows.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's what you know.
I'm excited to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Trustee Jackson coming around. Also, that's just a very good question. How many of our students are engaged in electives or sports? Like, I don't know. Maybe you've got some data that you can take about future. So I like it. Thank you. All right, um if you are, I forgot to ask if there were any questions online. Uh any questions online?
Same then.
From the audience here today? Any questions? No questions. Thank you so much, Miss. This is great. I appreciate it. This is great. A great presentation. Thank you so much. All right. All right, so we are, we completed our staff reports section of our agenda. But we're gonna dive into the discussion action sessions and we're gonna start with, I believe, Bob's nice news that someone, yeah, that's that little stretch.
It's getting fired up.
It's absolutely.
Who gave us a donation?
I'm sorry, he was standing to win it.
They didn't win it.
Uh San Pedro is uh bringing to us three donations.
Okay.
From three separate organizations. We've got one donation from the Philanthropic Ventures Foundation. This is related to their trip to the Chabot Space Giant Center. Uh so that was a donation of one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. We have a donation to recognize from the C and B Goodman Foundation, and that was five thousand dollars for materials and supplies.
Mm hmm.
Um and then we have a donation of a hundred ninety dollars providing transportation for a field trip from the Cooper. Education Foundation. So a total donation of six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to San Pedro.
Yeah.
Let's hear it, everybody.
Different time. Yes.
All right. Approval of receipt of the donation.
So again. Um all those in favor say aye.
Uh.
Uh that uh item passes. Uh well, wow, my goodness, I'm a little um. Rusty over here. So that item was moved by trustee Jackson and taken by uh trustee.
Martin.
Martine um and who annoys. None of us. Thank you. Um we don't have to do this separately, right? We can just do one item for all of them. Yeah, that is okay, perfect. Thank you so much for everyone who contributed to San Pedro uh this new ministry school. Much appreciated. All right, uh second item is we have approval resolution uh. Dash two, two, three, three, four, um number two, two, three, dash thirty five for California Energy Commission, California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing Efficiency. Uh who's presenting that one, Superintendent?
I'll say that one.
Yeah, Rob then. Then.
Um so these two items, these two resolutions are companion items to. Two contracts that you'll see on the consent.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um so these are resolutions for essentially for the board. And the district to uh to approve us going out for a grant from this. Uh California Energy Commission, California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency Program.
How's that?
Otherwise known as Calshape.
There's a hat for you, trustee Jackson.
Um so essentially what we're wanting to do, and this was brought to A by our business operations department. And this organization um helps us apply for the Calshape Grant from the state. And upon receipt of those funds for the elementary and the high school district. This uh this uh service will, they'll come in, they'll do a complete assessment of all of our H V A C.
Oh, wow.
Systems. Um just how they're all working, what filter is in them, what model they have, just all the information that would take us a lot of time to gather. And then also provide us with, they're actually going to go out and uh make sure that, you know, the filters are changed while they're out there touching the machines and give us recommendations. For how we can improve all of our systems that we can then hopefully utilize that information. Um couple that with information that we're gathering as part of our bond. Program with some of our new buildings and hopefully. Uh you know, the result would be just better system, a better understanding of how our systems work. Um and how to get the most out of those systems.
That's right. So it's kind of an assessment though. So to part and.
It's an assessment and a written assessment. Into repair and recommendation.
Oh, yeah, that's great. Okay.
I think it's Starwood Center for High School, Bob.
I don't know. I didn't want to talk about that, but thank you.
It will be all over. There's an elementary district and a high school district um on track. And so it will. It will be uh great support and service to our business operations department, which. I mean, let's just face it, we don't have the manpower to do uh an assessment at this kind of level.
Yeah.
And so no cost in addition.
No cost. Yeah, I hope that we move forward with the approval of dash two, 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 three, dash three, four, and. The second one, right? There's second, one at a time. I'll second that. Okay.
Um. So a motion to, so all those in favor to approve the uh resolution uh two, two, three. Two, 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 three, dash three, four. From Calshape program. Um everybody say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes and I'll move twenty two, twenty three, dash thirty five.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. So those uh two motions have been approved, announced, but. The four. Thank you very much. We need the Calshape program and our attention. We love it.
We're getting green when we're excited.
All right, this one is exciting, actually, the third one. So we need to approve an agreement so that we can engage a new company to help us. With our website. So, Vicina, you wanna tell us?
Yeah.
Briefly, what is the problem?
Yeah, so a few long weeks ago, we found out that School Loop, our website provider, is going out of business, um which wasn't a surprise. So. We got to work, um reached out to our community and we did um. Um but have a group of eleven seniors and staff and parents join us as we evaluated the different platforms out there. Uh we did make the decision to go with an educational based um company. Uh because of all the various nuances with uh having a public school district websites. Uh so there are a number of vendors out there. We looked at several um. We also kept in mind that we had to integrate with a lot of our other technologies, some of the series, Google Canvas, Parents Square being one of them. Um one of the platforms that rose to the top that we are recommending today. Um was a website provider that's been um around for a while, but they were recently acquired by Parents Square. Um so parents are now using this new web platform as part of an integrated communications system. So we use platform um through all of our schools in our district. Um for communication um to families from teachers and staff and the district from schools. And so now we'll be able to go into Parents Square to access our district website platform. So it will be different. It won't be Parents Square, but it's integrated. And there's a lot of benefits to that. Um and um the committee, um all, any number of the solutions would have been okay, but we think the integration with Parents Square. Um really it made it raise um rise to the top. Um it is good, easy to use editing software on the backend for teachers and staff. Um but it's simple and easy to to view for parents and um for structure. Employers. Um. In the end, we think um it's the right choice for us. So it's called Smart Place.
Mm hmm.
Um and they're going to be really strong partners as we migrate all of our existing content, clean it up and work on our designs. And move forward with um our launch. Price is right. It's actually less than a little pain. So. And um. It'll be, it'll be good. So when we unveil our websites on July first, um. They they will be different, but they will um have to move it. They're gonna just only improve them. Um as we kind of refine them throughout the summer because it's gonna be a rush to get them launched.
Yes.
Um and after that, it's always.
All right. Well, good. Thank you for all the work, Vicina. Do we have any um questions about this or audience stuff?
Uh I just wanna know, we want, when we make these kind of switches. And I think you were here for one, and we have sort of problematic on with the teacher community. So I just wanna be sure it's more than just the few teachers, but we do a little bit of deeper check with them and this is all. I know it's a little different. It's more for parents and students, but uh. You know, just remember, there were people came in after the fact with me and there were major concerns and we had to redo the whole. Yeah. Um but I I I was thrilled to hear you got a committee of eleven.
Yeah.
It's just a lot. And it's it's got a representative small. So just wanna, yeah. Uh roll, roll forward and I'll move approval of this um. Um. Contract.
Perfect.
I see agreement.
Thank you. Um. So then um. Uh yeah, some of the approval agreement uh for a new website, um platform uh moved by trustee Jackson's. Second by trustee Martine. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that uh it's approved. Faces, passes. Thank you. All right. Go on. Okay, number number four. So we need to approve our regular board meeting calendar for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
There you go. So we've um kind of looked at this one and modified it a little bit. I mean, during the years, you can always make change. But um basically. There you go, with two meetings a month, with the exception of um November and December and.
So I looked at that and asked, Yonker first called out. Uh and we, you know, we we have. I just wonder whether there was any discussion in doing it on Tuesday.
Yeah.
And we've discussed this every year. It seems like.
I know, and then we should. I mean, it's difficult, but we should try to make that accommodation possible. Um I would, I would support that.
And and then the other question I have, just a verification, we have our annual meeting and it's gotta be at a. Specific date by state law. So has that been checked, do you see?
Yeah.
And then in the um May, we didn't have. Um was it our student trustee mentioned the academic, the athletic dinner awards? Now, that's something that um. You're gonna wanna go to.
Yeah.
But we didn't hear about it. We used to hear about it because we had a trustee and to to a title, oh, let us know about it. Um we actually moved our date so that trustees could go to that. Other school district trustees all go to those dinners. But we don't have that history, but. Having on the line is absolutely fabulous. So. I wonder whether we can look at that to, and we we switched the date to be on Tuesday. We also are missing two trustees that might have dates that they like to, you know, raise that like.
Yeah. Just bring in. Yeah, I can nothing. Great, okay. Um all right, thank you so much. We'll bring it for next board meeting. I wonder if the next item. That we have um also discussion of board members' participation in twenty twenty three graduation ceremonies and eighth grade promotions. Um Jim, would you like to, well, the three of us are here. We're gonna do some of the others. Yeah, we can put our names on the ones that are here. Um let me see. Okay.
Basically, Madron and Adult Ed and Davidson are on Thursday, June eighth at different times. Madron is at four um.
Oh, nice.
Adult Ed at six thirty and Davidson at six. And then on Friday is Venetia Valley in the morning and then Santa Fe High and it's around the high end.
I can attend any of them. No, I can't. I'm gonna be out of time on work.
So you're out.
For both of them. For all of them. I'm out in Denver. That's a shame. I just saw Victoria. I'd really like to be at the majority. I saw Victoria with the Victoria.
That's next time. We lost her.
You'll find out.
Okay, I'm bringing that. Okay.
Great.
So we're bringing this back.
Yeah, so Jim, I'll I'll um I can either go.
I think you are.
E L on Thursday, but obviously not. The latter two at the same time. You know, Madron and Davidson or Adult Ed. And then. I think, anyway, I just wanna put that out there, but I wanna go to town on the high for graduation.
All right.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I know you guys all have your trustee areas, but I think if you can rotate. Because it's just good to see.
I think, I agree.
You went to, like I went wild with it. I went to town on the last year.
Yeah, and I went to S R.
That just, you know, this, you have different school.
Right, I'll send you my dates. Yeah. All right, yeah, this is great. Un- unfortunately, because I have a work commitment on the A, I'm gonna fly back in the dance on Friday and be there for Santa Fe High. Um because I've been to town. So yeah, we'll circle back in our chickens. So she. Finish about the same thing. I like going there. But can I make it to that one? All right.
I agree.
Okay, let's go to consider agenda folks. All right, so if we can get this. Those home, like what you can, I mean, I don't know who.
Try.
Can go and watch the game. All right, approval, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve all the other people sending them up?
I need to approve all the items in the agenda.
Does anybody need to, uh, you think?
No.
All right, perfect. So. Um. Nine seconds.
I'll just say.
Uh thank you. Okay, so everyone in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Uh that item passes being um moved by trustee Martine and. Uh that item passes being um moved by trustee Martin and second by trustee Dacher. Thank you very much, that meeting adjourned and happy appreciation we to all the.
And then victory, let's go to close session.
Adjourned to close.
Adjourned to close session and happy to uh teacher's appreciation.